Webinar, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing can watch on YouTube.
Madam Chair, I don't mean to interrupt, but we're having difficulty hearing you.
Okay, how about now?
That is better.
Better?
Thank you.
Participants who registered in advance will be connect will connect to the hearing by phone or with a compatible electronic device and have the option of participating via video and audio only. Participants will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Please mute your devices until you are called upon to speak. Those participating by video will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when their item is heard. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use the share screen or any other panelist's controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. My name is Nancy Omen, and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via WebEx webinar who can be seen and heard are Aaron Chang, Larry Clay, and Carl Niffl. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haraasane, and the Wendat peoples, and it is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Matisse peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request by email. Please include your name, address, and an email address. Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, known as TLAB, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government recently amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. As of November 28, 2022, only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired, and when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first with the presentation of the application, and then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers, and this will mark the end of the discussion. The applicant will, or the application, rather, will then be taken into committee for a decision. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of changes. Madam Deputy Secretary/Treasurer, are there any minutes to be confirmed?
Good morning, Madam Chair and panel members. Yes, the March 22, 2023 meeting and the April 5, 2023 meeting minutes are both ready for adoption.
Okay, panel members, I need a motion to adopt the minutes for the March 22 and April 5 meetings. So that's moved by Mr. Niffl, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. So those minutes have been adopted. Are there any declarations of interest, staff or panel members? Seeing none? Okay. Any files to be closed this morning?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, there are no files to be closed.
Are there any deferral requests this morning?
Through you, Madam Chair. There is one application requesting deferral by the applicant this morning. That is item number 746 Aberdeen Avenue. In addition, it has come to our attention with respect to item number 11 for 23 Cavill Avenue. There is an incorrect purpose on the notice of public hearing regarding a rear two-story addition that is proposed yet not identified on the notice. Perhaps we could have the agent, if he is available, to explain the situation, and the committee can consider the position.
Okay, we can do that. I do show an opposition speaker for number 11, so I think I'd rather go in order. However, for item number 7, I don't show any opposition speakers. So panel members, let's go to item 7 for the deferral.
Madam Chairman, I'm afraid I can't hear you.
Okay, something's off with this mic. Literally have to. I'm.
That's fine.
Let me hang on. Let me try. Hang on, Carl. I'm gonna try this other one here. Okay, can you guys hear me on this one? It's. Can you guys hear me? There's a big.
That's a little better, but you're like you're in an echo chamber.
No, it's worse. No, I don't. Took it off. Okay. So. Okay, trying this one again. The other one is even worse. It echoes. Okay, so basically, I have to yell then. So I'll do my best, because the other one has got a really bad echo, so I'm not. Yeah, we'll try to switch seats later. Okay, so I'd like to go to item 7 for the for the deferral, if we could. I don't show any opposition speakers. Bear with me one second. So item number 746 Aberdeen Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of trees on the subject property, a covering letter from Mr. Derbysh, the agent, as well as a deferral request. We have staff reports from forestry. Forestry is asking for condition number 2. And we have a planning, a planning report that is asking for a condition and four form letters in support, and we had interest expressed from number 48 and 44. Do I have the agent for 46 Aberdeen on the line?
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Derbysh, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, can you just tell us briefly why you're asking for deferral?
Sure. It was just a technical mix-up. The the public notice was circulated, and it didn't include all of the variances. There's two separate zoning notices, one for the main house and one for the garden suite, proposed garden suite dwelling. So only only one of the notices with the variances were circulated. So we're deferring so that a proper circulation can happen, and then we can get on the the meeting on May 10.
Okay, thank you. Okay, panel members, I'll need a motion for the deferral. Mr. Niffl.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move deferral. There really isn't an alternative here. They're missing variances, and they need to be corrected. So I'd like to move a deferral.
Okay, Mr. Clay seconds. So motion to defer to the May 10 meeting moved by Mr. Niffl, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, so let's go to item number 1, 455 Palmerston Boulevard. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a revised covering letter from the agent, as well as an arborist report prepared by Urban Forest Associates, Inc., presentation materials from the agent, and we have staff reports from forestry. They're asking for refusal of variances 1 and 7 or conditions, and planning is also asking for a condition. I am showing two speakers in interest. Do we have both speakers? Yes? Okay. Mr. Drawr, are you there?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm here.
Hi, good morning. Can you just identify yourself for the record? And as soon as you've done that, we'll start the clock. You have five minutes to do a presentation.
Of course. My name is Mike Drawr, and my address is my firm at Church Street, Suite 200. I've actually not, I'll just mention about it, I've not seen any reports from forestry. I'm not aware of any conditions that they're requesting or suggesting a refusal. I don't see anything on the applicant information center, but I'm not seeing, and we certainly haven't received anything from from staff. So I'm wondering if we're able to pause the timer so we can quickly review those conditions?
Actually, can I just?
I'm not sure if it's a possibility.
Can I run the two names by you? Because I see a note here that says with agents, I'm just curious, Belinda Marchese? Is that?
Well, Belinda Marchese, as well as Janice Nyarko Mensah, are with the Gene Tweed Center, which is the operator of the Palmerston House today.
Okay.
They're here to speak to the operations and management if there's any questions from the panel, but they're not planning to speak to.
All right. So, okay, so in that case, I don't need you to do a presentation, because I have them listed as people with of interest. So I'm gonna go to my members then and see if they have any questions. Mr. Niffl, and then Mr. Clay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The applicant said that he's not aware of the conditions from forestry. I wonder if we might tell him what they are?
So.
In.
Yeah, go ahead, Carl.
To the applicant, the forestry condition or report indicates that they prefer that you deny, that we deny variances number 1 and 7, the rear yard landscape percentage requirement in the ancillary building lot coverage, as the approval will require the removal of a healthy bylaw-protected tree and its tree number 7, and the permanent loss of viable planting space. And then it says that in despite despite these recommendations, if the Committee of Adjustment approves the required, the variances, which is numbers 1 and 7, Urban Forestry lets the variances be subject to the following conditions, and it's, I believe it's condition number 2, which is a submission of an application for a permit to injure or remove a privately-owned tree as per the city's municipal code. And there's more wording to it, but that's the general gist of the recommendations. Does that help?
It does help. I'm, like I said, I'm very surprised, because we've been working with staff since 2021 on this application. We've dealt with community planning for quite a long time and had a lot of discussions about landscaping. And actually, it's captured in the planning staff report, where they explain that we've had discussions about about landscaping and soft landscaping in the rear yard. We have satisfied staff in that regard. So from my perspective, this is coming out of left field. I'm not sure what to do about this. But I think that, given the discussions we've had with staff, it would be, and risk coming out of nowhere and not being posted on the AIC, unless I'm missing it, but I think I'm looking out pretty carefully. I'm not seeing anything.
Can I just ask staff, can you put up forestry report, staff report, number 2? That's the one. Okay, that's the report, dated April 12. But it was in our original package, so I'm assuming it was on the AIC, because it didn't come in the supplemental.
I apologize, Madam Chair. I'm not seeing it here.
Oh.
In any case.
It's on the screen. I don't know if you have a screen on.
Yeah. No, I do see it on the screen. I'm not seeing it on the applicant information center. I'm looking pretty carefully right now. But I mean, in any case, I think we would, if the committee were to approve the application, I think we would be happy to accept the condition that's being recommended by the committee, by the Urban Forestry. I will also note that we had, which is probably not in your package, but it should be in the quote "very late materials" folder, I understand. There is a letter from the Palmerston Area Residence Association, which was submitted this morning, and that letter identifies a couple of concerns that they had. Here you go. About, just clarification questions about the use, and then some questions about landscaping and, I'm not sure if landscaping is captured in the letter, but certainly about traffic in terms of car deliverable deliveries, et cetera. And as you can see, we had a meeting with them last week, and they have now been satisfied that the application and the variances are appropriate, and they are, they've written this morning in full support of the application. So we have discussed soft landscaping with both and with community planning. I would have assumed that we would have received any recommendations for refusal from Urban Forestry, but we didn't receive anything. I would then urge the committee to take the second recommendation in the Urban Forestry report, approve the application, and apply the the condition being requested.
Carl, any more questions? If not, I'll go to Mr. Clay. Okay.
No, I'm good, thanks.
Yeah, I had the, I had the same basic question as Carl, but, and I have, frankly, I have no difficulty with this application on a whole, but I am just interested. Maybe you can just give us a couple bars on the tree in question. It's in the rear. Is it, do you know offhand what size it is and what type it is?
For you, Madam Chair, I'm not sure offhand. It'll have the arborist report in front of me, but I can certainly get that information quickly. I'm just opening it up right now. It will be tree number 7, I believe. There we go, tree number 7. It is, let's just look through it right now. It is a 39.7 centimeters diameter tree. I would note that the tree is essentially located right now, I believe, against the side of the existing garage, and the garage is being removed and replaced with a garden suite, which would house four bedrooms for women requiring supportive housing. So I think with any alteration to the garage, you're likely going to see that tree have to go. It's not as if the tree is kind of on its own in the center of the rear yard. It is already essentially, at least partially underneath the garage that exists today. The importance of the project, maybe just to reiterate, this is a 17-unit, an expansion of a seven-unit women's supportive housing development, which has been operating for 60 years in a neighborhood. The addition would allow for 10 additional bedrooms to be constructed, four of which would be in the garden suite. The garden suite is only proposed to be, I think, approximately 2 square meters larger than what's permitted, and the soft landscaping is only approximately 7 square meters more or less than required. It's really a fairly minor difference, and even if we were to meet those requirements of the bylaw, it's unlikely that the tree will be able to be saved. Therefore, I would reiterate my request that the application be approved subject to the condition request of Urban Forestry.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions. Mr. Drawr, is there anything you want to add before we go into committee?
I think I'll just add, we really do appreciate all the staff's support in helping us get here. It's unlike, or atypical, sorry, to get a supportive report from community planning. I think in this point, in this situation, we do have an actually supportive report. It's atypical, and I wanted to highlight that, the fact that staff have really been supportive of this project since before the garden suite bylaw was enacted. We've been working with them for a long time and had waited until the garden suite bylaw was enacted and then approved, or the appeal of it dismissed. But we are here today with an application which is really, really important, additional supportive housing for women and their, and women with children dealing with substance use issues and looking for better outcomes to their lives. The use has been operating in the community for just under 60 years, and this would be a pretty innocuous expansion to it, which we're really hoping the committee can help us approve today. I would just add that as per my planning letter opinion, as a professional planner, that the application and the variances do meet the four tests for a standard planning act, and that they do maintain the general and purpose of the official plan and the bylaw, that they are minor, and that they are desirable and appropriate for the use and development of the land. Thank you very much.
Before we go into committee, you're aware of the planning condition for permanent opaque?
We are aware of the condition. Sorry, Madam Chair, we are aware of the condition, and we're very happy to accept that condition. We likely would have suggested some screening would be added anyway, so perfectly happy to accept that and the fourth recondition.
Okay, thanks. All right, panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Niffl.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Like my colleague, Mr. Clay, I don't have any difficulty with this application either. I think it's a, it's a necessary use, and as the applicant indicated, it's one that has existed in the community for over 60 years. There are no objections from the community, which is a tribute to the way in which the project has been managed. I agree with Mr. Drawr that the second forestry condition, which is forestry condition number 2, of the options, I think is the most viable. The tree in question is likely to be damaged or die for any expansion of the garage, and as he's indicated, that expansion is providing four additional dwelling units for an at-risk community. So I'd like to move approval of the application subject to forestry condition number 2 and the planning screening condition.
Okay, do I have a second or? Okay, so that motion is to approve the application, including forestry condition number 2 and the planning condition in the April 12 report, moved by Mr. Niffl, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. The application's been approved. Item number 2, 535 Russell Hill Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, an arborist report prepared by Al Miley and Associates, as well as a tree preservation plan, two form letters in support from 529 and 533 Russell Hill, and I'm showing two speakers. Do we have both, both speakers? Which one do you have? Okay. All right, do we have the agent on the line, please?
I'm chair member of the committee. My name is Miral Haddari, 1090 Don 0506, PMP Design Group.
Okay, Mr. Haddari, we have.
Mr. Haddari, we have one.
Mr. Haddari, do you have something running in the background?
No.
No? Okay, just had some echo there for a moment. Can I ask you to do a presentation? I do have one opposition speaker. You have five minutes, starting now.
Okay, thank you so much. This application, subject to committee of adjustment in the last November, and after corresponding with the staff and the committee of adjustment, so we revised the drawing and sent back to the zoning, and we received the revised zoning, and right now, the application is satisfied by the by the committee of adjustment staff, and we also worked with the arborists about the trees that we changed the plan to preserve the trees based on the report, and also, we have the letter of concern about the neighbor of the property 533, and I don't know if you received the emails from the neighbors that we sent out this morning to the committee of adjustment and also to me. So I'm reading this letter for you. As behalf of the owner, dear committee member, this intent of the letter is to mitigate the concern of 533 Russell Hill, which involves our property. We continuously work with them, and Trish, the owner, requested us last night to send a confirmation letter to committee of adjustment. Please see attached. So we are also in agreement that we are not seeking to reduce the FSI that would be triggered by this change. We plan to pick up those lost FSI from interior space, and the concern of the neighbors is about site year setback, that we don't have any variance for south side setback on the south side, we are facing to the 533 Russell Hill. So the letter is a commitment from the owner to the neighbor to have these changes during the permit application. And so there is no other things that I need to add to just explain that the length that we are seeking for in the committee of adjustment application is just because of the underground swimming pool and the utility area for the swimming pool and the backyard, and the original building is 16.69, the less than the available bylaw. So yeah, there is a number here, 16.69, the length of the building, and the addition requested is just for the underground swimming pool and the utility area in the back. So I'm more than happy to answer any question.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go to the opposition, and then I'll have you speak to that, to the concerns raised, and then we'll. Yeah, go ahead, Larry.
Just a quick question. So I'm not sure if I heard properly, the applicant spoke to, did I hear him changing the FSI number, or did I mishear that?
Are you making?
We are not changing any.
Are you making a change to the variance for FSI, or was it?
No, no, because.
Oh, okay.
No, no, we are not changing FSI, because the site year setback is not something in the, in the application. We are not seeking for site year setback on the south side, so we are following, we are following the neighbor's concern about the setback during the permit application, and he's not changing the FSI.
Okay, thank you. I thought I heard that, but I must have misheard.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to the person who has expressed an interest, and then I'll come back to you, okay? So can I have Patricia Reisman?
Good morning, committee. Thank you. In view of the fact that the applicant has confirmed to this committee this morning that he will stick with his 1.2-meter setback from our property, I have no further objections, and I thank the committee for all their good work. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, where is Ms. Reisman from?
I'm from 533 Russell Hill Road.
Thank you.
The property immediately south of the applicant's building.
Okay, thank you. So do you have the other speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, all right, we're not able to reach the other speaker. Mr. Haddari, so you're confirming that, you know, as you already have, that you're maintaining the setback discussed with the neighbor of 1.2, correct?
Yes, yes. And also my clients, yes, yes, and also my client, yes, he worked with the 529, 530, 531, 532, and 530 Russell Hill, and also the apartment building, and all of them had the positive feedback on the, and our favor in the plan.
Panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Haddari? Mr. Niffl? Yeah, Carl, I don't know if you can hear me. I haven't touched anything. I'm not in the meeting. Like, I don't log in, people, so I. Like, I don't log in, people, so I, I. I only touch the clock and I never log into the weather.
Through the chair, sorry to interrupt. It seems we're having some technical difficulties at the moment. If you could just all please hold on, we appreciate your patience. We're just trying to rectify this issue.
What has to do with? I mean, you want me to log in, try to log into the weather. It's going to kick me out constantly because it's never moving to the. My internet. I can try. Oh. Is the block that control? Oh, so it's not just me, it's everything, right? Yeah, it's a block that. Into what? I'm not, I'm not finding anything. That's my point. I'm never. Like, I'm never logging to the weather. Yeah, exactly. Like, I'm, I'm, I meant, that's, yeah. Carl and Larry, can you hear me now? Carl?
Yeah.
Larry?
Hello, committee room two, we can see you again.
See you again.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Larry, Carl, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Sarah was able to fix it without a technician coming down.
Wow.
Big round of applause, members, for Sarah.
I might have to have Sarah come by my house every once in a while to fix my system.
Maybe she'd come to mine after yours. She could have a full-time job.
Okay, so, um, do you guys have any questions for Mr. Haddari? I think that's where we were. No? Okay, Mr. Haddari, are you, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Anything that you want to add before we take this into committee? We've been unable to reach the other speaker.
I know, I'm, no, I'm okay. And I answered the question about the power, about the other variances. So everything is fine from my side and I'm okay to go to the motion.
Okay, we're going to take it into committee then. Panel members? Mr. Clay?
Sure, thanks, Chair. I'll, I think I can take this one. I, I was initially a little bit concerned about length and depth, but I think the explanation from the agent satisfied my concern. It really is only the basement level which exceeds the, the length. And satisfied the neighbor to the south. I do note that towards the north, there's a parking lot for a large apartment building. So I think in some, this proposal won't have any negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. And it's, these are large lots in this particular neighborhood. So I think it's a supportable application. I'm happy to move approval and I don't believe there are any conditions.
Okay. So motion to approve moved by Mr. Clay. Do I have a second or Mr. Niffel? All in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number three, 36 Roxborough Street East. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a previous decision affecting the subject property, presentation materials from the agent. We have email correspondence from Heritage. They don't have any concerns. Correspondence in opposition from number 72 Clooney Drive. And I do believe I have that neighbor listed as a speaker. And I have two other people listed as speakers. Do we have all three? Opposition, yeah? Okay. Can I have the agent, please?
For this proposal, 102 Avenue Road.
Hi, we're doing 36 Roxborough. Is this Mr. Wangle?
Yes, it is.
I've got three opposition speakers. So if I can just get you to identify yourself for the record and then if you can do a presentation, we'll start the clock for five minutes.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Richard Wangle, 102 Avenue Road.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we can just pull up our presentation material. So Madam Chair, this is a renovation of a house that was previously renovated by a different owner extensively a few years ago. On the site plan, you will see in green is the existing dwelling. And it sits on top of an underground garage which extends towards the rear, which accounts for the length and depth. But the actual house itself, the body of the house is approximately 14.21 meters. And there's a one-story extension, that little tip at the front, that contributes to some additional length, which makes it approximately 15.67. This is a proposal for a one-story breakfast room conservatory addition, which has a dimension of 5.16 meters deep by 5.44 meters wide. And it's, again, it's one story. And with that, above it is a second-story bay window that's part of a washroom. That's kind of the extent of the additions to this home that are proposed. If we could just go to the next page, please? And this is a density map that you've seen before from our office. In blue is our site that shows an FSI request of 0.7377 or 73.77%. Circled in red are other variances that are greater than 73%. So these are variances that were previously approved by the city and well within the range of approved densities that are higher than ours. The next page, please. This is the existing home. There was a very contemporary addition that was put on and our clients want to return it back to a little bit more of a traditional with taking away some of the screens. If we go to the next page, it'll just show the same elevation, just slightly modified. And what you'll see at the very top on the third floor, there is a dotted line that represents a small balcony. I know that is an area of concern. But the owners wanted to bring this back up to comply with OBC standards, which requires a second means of egress from the residence. So there is a proposed 4.0 square meter balcony, again, only to be used for fire escape as a place of refuge. And again, we're happy to obscure the balcony glass to make it shielded somewhat. We could raise its height instead of 42 inches, up to 48 inches and look to some screening. It's not to provide any overview. It's strictly for use, God forbid, there's a fire. Again, the distance between that line and the rear of the property is approximately 15.36 meters. So over 50 feet away from the rear of the property line. Again, it's, I don't think it proposes any overview issues. There are windows up there already in the bedrooms. We can just, I think, end by saying, I think this is minor. Heritage has no issues, planning has no issues. And I think this does meet the four tests and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll come back to you after we hear from the opposition. So do you have the first speaker? Hi, is this Robert Tedford?
Yes, yes, this is Robert Tedford. 72 Clooney Drive, we're.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead. So if you, well, you can start now. You have five minutes, okay?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. Our first comment relates to the fact that the documents provided by the architect are insufficient for us as a direct neighbor to properly understand the proposed addition. Our garden faces west, the applicant garden faces north. So we look directly west across the applicant's property. So with respect, we submit that the architectural plans do not appear to comply with the required architectural plans that set out in item four of the committee of adjustments of application checklist. That is to say, that there are no architectural plans for the ground floor, partial second floor or third floor development of the deck. There are no elevations that would illustrate the east and west facade. So that some estimate of massing and overlook is it might affect our garden and those of other adjacent properties. And three, there is no indication of buildings on adjacent lots, in quotes, neighboring properties in relation to the project. So that some judgment might be made with regard to overlook, i.e. privacy concerns, suggesting new sheds and sun and shade impacts. And there's also no indication of proposed windows and doors, as they might affect the adjacent, adjacent properties, to be able to assess privacy concerns. Our second comment really relates to the misleading characterization of a proposed addition as being a minor variance. In fact, the variance permission being requested contributes to an FSI variance an increase from the bylaw of some additional 22% of allowable. Secondly, a resident depth variance, an increase again from the bylaw of a multiple of over one and a half times the bylaw allowable. And the residence, as it now exists, is already 25% higher than allowable under the prevailing bylaw. So taken together, we submit with respect that this, these variances represent a soft or a creeping erosion, a creeping erosion of the planning intent for the residences which occupy this historic, existing residential development with associated and very important garden allotments. We appreciate the opportunity to present these remarks to the committee and we thank you.
Thank you, sir. Panel members, do you have any questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you, Mr. Tedford. Do you have the next speaker on the line?
Thank you.
Ms. Bowen?
Ms. Bowen, you've been unmuted.
Elizabeth Bowen, are you there? Okay, can you go to the next speaker, please? Mr. Dorney?
Good morning.
Hi, can you just identify yourself, your name and address for the record? And then we'll start the clock. You'll have five minutes.
Yeah, good morning, Brendan Dorney, 74 Clooney Drive, Toronto. I'm the property adjacent east of the subject property and northern adjacent neighbor to the previous speaker, Robert Tedford. My concerns, as someone expecting to have obscured western view, are similar and identical to those voiced by Mr. Tedford.
Okay, panel members, any questions for this speaker, for Mr. Dorney? And anything else? And anything else you want to add, sir, or you just echo the previous speaker's views?
Yeah, clearly, obviously, yeah, we wanted to validate the math as Mr. Tedford had done previously, but yes, just standing in solidarity, we both, we are conjoined homes directly adjacent to the subject property and yeah, our concerns are, you know, are cohesive and similar.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Niffel has a question for you?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The previous speaker and I presume you as well indicate that you don't, you have concerns because you don't understand the implications of the application because you haven't seen plans and elevations and so forth. We actually have plans and elevations in the agenda and I wonder if there's some reason why you haven't seen them and if, if Mr. Wangle could explain them to you briefly or what your concerns are because it seems to me that the, although you may not agree with the application, the information you say is missing actually is now available and I'm wondering if you are having trouble accessing it.
No, I don't think there's any trouble accessing. Maybe you can just outline where the side elevation of the proposed one-story addition is.
Are you looking at a screen right now? The west elevation is showing at the moment.
Yeah.
And the lower portion is the proposed addition on the left-hand side of the drawing.
Staff have just highlighted it for you. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, it clarifies things. I, more comparative to the existing footprint, if we're to talk how far that knocks out, where's the existing, where's the existing rear perimeter or the rear wall of that house? Is it where the, the large hatched block currently stops?
Can you put Mr. Wangle into the conversation for a moment? I, I do want to add though that there is only one variance before us, so there's no variance for depth or length, but I'll, I'll have Mr. Wangle answer your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, that hatched block is existing. That was a previous renovation. So what is highlighted in, in red right now is the one-story addition conservatory that we are planning. Okay, so it's on, in the west half of our lot, further away and the setback to that property line is approximately ten meters away from the property line itself. So just to answer a couple of the questions, I don't know if I'm allowed to address any of the concerns now or if you want to wait?
Just give me one second. Were you able to reach the other individual or were just...? No, okay. Yeah, go ahead. We're unable to get the other speaker, so please go ahead, Mr. Wangle.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and it was clarified that all of these plans were submitted to the city and are on file. It's just when we send out plans to neighbors in the immediate vicinity, we typically go to neighbors on both sides of the property and our site plan does show the immediate neighbors' relationship to our property and not the rear because of the depth. I do believe this is minor nature. Again, there's a talk about shadowy and overview, but again, this is our backyard, a view across our backyard, even though there's a large hedge that divides the Clooney properties from our property, I think this addition will be obscured from their view. Again, a view across someone else's property is not necessarily an entitlement, but there will be no shadow impact on these neighbors as it's only a one-story and it'll be at the height of the hedges which are going to continue to grow. So I, I think we've, I believe we've addressed all the concerns and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Panel members, do you have any questions? Mr. Clay?
Yeah, just, thanks, Chair. I just wanted, the neighbors on Clooney, I think, were interested in how far back it goes and I was just looking at the site plan. Just want to confirm, it looks like it's five meters back, is that correct?
That's correct. It's five point one six meters.
Yep. And single-story?
Single-story. And again, the only difference is there's a slight addition of a bay window that's against the existing two-story wall of the home that you can see it says addition two stories, there's a little bay window just against the north wall of the house.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wangle, I think we reached the other speaker, so I'm going to try one more time. Mr. or Ms. Bowen, are you there? Elizabeth? Elizabeth, are you there? So is Mr. Dorney there? I just want to, have you still got him there? Mr. Dorney? So, Mr. Dorney, we're going to go into committee. Before I do, was, was your question answered by Mr. Wangle?
I mean, I, I see the point. I just want to, you know, think the house, just ultimately, I think the house is kind of big enough. So if it's, you know, that, that's my opinion. I just wanted it to be voiced.
Okay.
I appreciate the effort that's been, you know, put into clarifying, but you know, I wanted to check the math on, on the, you know, the variance, the creeping erosion as Robert Tedford outlined.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I believe this is a very small addition that has really no negative impact on neighbors or the general community. It's a very small addition to a kitchen. I, I think Mr. Wangle's done a good job in explaining the distance between the addition and the properties on Clooney and, and with the hedge that there probably will be no visual impact over time. I would like to clarify that there is that very tiny balcony on the third floor that Mr. Wangle indicated. It's a, it's required that they have a secondary exit, but the balcony is incredibly small and in my view doesn't, doesn't create any impact on the neighboring communities. I, under the circumstances, Madam Chairman, I think this clearly meets the four tests and is a reasonable development. I'd like to move approval without condition.
Okay. Do I have a second or Mr. Chang? So, motion to approve is moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Chang. All in favor? This carries unanimously. Item number four. Six Delaney Crescent. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from the agent and four photographs of the property. I'm not showing any opposition speakers. Do I have the agent on the line?
Ten twenty-four Dundas Street West, M six J one W seven.
Sorry, I didn't catch your name, though.
Walter Gerlato.
Okay, good morning. I'm going to see if the members have any questions for you. I don't think we need a presentation. Mr. Niffel?
Just very quick, thank you, Madam Chairman. Could you clarify that there's been consultation with the neighbors first and the second question was, could you explain, is there a screening on the west end of the balcony or not?
Yes, yes, the, okay, so to your first question, we've, we do communicate with our direct neighbor on the west. As far as the screening on the, did you say there was screening on the west side? Correct?
Yeah, because as I, as I see it, there's a, there's a wall extension on one side and there's a small piece that doesn't appear to be screened on the other side. I just wanted to clarify if I've got that correct and whether you think screening needs to be added.
Okay, so the, the screening on the west side, yes, that's, that is the west side. We're the full screening for the, for the full width of the, of the balcony and that is where our direct neighbor is, to the west. Now, just a little bit of background on, on this property. So my daughter, Desiree Gerlato, and her husband, Austin Roberts, purchased a house and moved into the house January twenty twenty-one and the house had a lot of misgivings. Along with the house, though, came number four Delaney, which is to the east. If you were to pop up the survey and some of the photographs that I, that I've taken just to give you an idea of what, what the property looks like, you'll notice, yeah, so Des, Des and Austin are entitled for that property number four. And that is why there was no screening on the east side of the, of the, of the balcony.
Okay, and is there, is, there's a building on, on that property at present, is there? Because the survey doesn't indicate that there is.
There is no building, so let's, let's pop up the, the photographs.
Okay, that answers the question and that's good.
Oh, okay. I just want to, I just want to make note as well that, oh, actually, on the purpose of the application in the paragraph, the rear ground floor deck, I just, that's not correct. There is no ground floor deck. You just walk out into soft permeable landscaping.
Okay.
Okay. As well, I just wanted to make note, sorry?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so would you like us to remove that from the purpose?
The, the ground floor deck? Yes, that would, that would be great if you could do that.
Yeah.
So this is what the property... So, so sorry.
It's okay. I think there's a delay because we've had technical difficulties all morning. So yeah, we're going to remove the rear ground floor deck from the purpose.
Yes, so this is a photograph from the back looking front, to the, toward the front. You'll notice there's a garden there and, and that, that is considered number four Delaney. That came with the house, which is kind of odd, but anyway. So if we went down to the next photograph, now we're, now we're looking towards the garage to the, towards the laneway in the back. I just wanted to make note on the left side, that little, that little one-story thing there, that is going to be removed. That's, that's, we're proposing to remove that and to put in soft permeable landscaping there. So we're moving floor space in order to, I guess, increase floors placed in a, in a different area on the side of the building. If you look at the plans, you'll see how we kind of re, we're proposing to reconfigure how, how that, the space is going to be used. So we're just essentially, yeah, there we go. So, yeah, so you notice our neighbor has the same sort of little structure there as well, you know, so we're, so we're proposing to remove that. And squaring off the house. The, the house does have a lot of shortcomings. Again, they bought it in twenty twenty-one, it was a very hot seller's market. They knew that the house didn't really suit their needs, but, you know, they did express to me this would be their forever home and they just wanted to, and the fact that they are expecting a child in, in August, they, they did need to kind of make some modifications to it. In my covering letter, I also noted that the front wall, the facade is, is kind of tilting in towards the house and it, and it compromised the floor on, in the master bedroom, the current master bedroom, where you literally have to, have to climb the floor to get into the bed. So there's a lot of, you know, issues with the house and so this was an opportunity to maybe we can do a little bit better and bring it up to code as well. The garage is nothing more, it's not really a garage, it's more of a shed, so they can't really even use the garage.
Okay, let me see if there are any other questions for you, members? Any other questions? Okay, you're almost at five minutes. Anything else you want to add before we go into committee to make a decision?
Nope, I, I, I think I will accept any questions you have. I, I hope these variances are minor enough that, that they can be accepted.
Well, let's find out. Okay.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Clay. We're in committee.
Sure, thanks, Chair. Thanks, that was a great presentation, Walter. Really appreciate it. Very helpful clarifying stuff. I do have some sympathy. My son and his wife recently bought a fixer-upper too, so I know exactly what the family is going through in terms of bringing it back up to code and this seems to me to be a very modest addition along the side of the house. I'm, I'm particularly pleased to see the return of part of the backyard to soft landscaping. I think that's a commendable aspect of this application. I think that the variances before us are, are really quite minor and I don't think this proposal would have any detrimental impact on the surrounding neighborhood. I'm happy to move approval of this application and I don't see any, I don't see any conditions.
Okay. Do I have a second or Mr. Niffel? So, yeah, so the application as amended then, Mr. Clay, because we took out the rear deck?
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, so the motion to approve moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, item number five. Two eighty-six Riverside Drive. The committee has before it a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have email correspondence from Heritage, the Archaeological Division, and they don't have any concerns. And ravine and natural feature protection. They sent something? I didn't show anything.
Through the chair, just no condition comment.
Okay, thanks. So they also don't have any, any concerns. And I'm not showing any opposition speakers. Do we have the agent on the line?
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Sal Cremini. Address two five seven two, Aglington Avenue West.
Hey, good morning. I don't think we need a presentation. I do show somebody listed who's speaking in support. Do we have that person? Can you just give us that person, please? Mr. Fang? Okay. Mr. Cremini, I'm going to see if the panel members have any questions for you. Panel members, any questions? No? Okay, Mr. Cremini, we're ready to take this into committee to make a decision. I'm not sure if you were aware, Mr. Fang wanted to support you, but we can't reach him on the line, so it's noted.
In consult with...
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Chair. In consult with the owners, I know, I know they were in discussions with him and he was excited about the proposal and probably why he wanted to speak today, but they, they've, the owners have done a great job reaching out to the community, actually hosted an informal party as well. They got full support, north and south neighbors, and I'm assuming that's why Mr. Fang wanted to support it as well.
Okay. Well, nice to hear that you guys had a little party to show people your plans. It's always good to consult. So we're ready to take it into committee. Anything you want to add before we do so?
No, I think the one thing that caught me and maybe just so the committee is aware of it, I was personally concerned about the south yard setback.
In what way? You want us to know something about the south yard setback or...? Mr. Cremini, did I lose you? Or was that Mr. Fang? Like now I'm totally confused. Or was that Mr. Fang, like now I'm totally confused?
We'll be able to fully access the rear yard on the property of 286 because the west foundation wall is set back from the cantilevered first floor.
So I'm really sorry, but I don't know who's speaking right now because we lost all audio, so I didn't hear a word that was said. Was that you speaking, Mr. Creamy, still?
It was, it was pretty detailed. It wasn't.
Okay, okay, go for it again then, because we didn't hear a word just said.
So I just, I just wanted to make the committee aware, one thing that concerned me about the proposal was the side yard setback on the west side of point four five from the required minimum. But by reviewing the plans, you'll notice that the first floor cantilevers pass the recessed foundation wall, so all patrons and, and the owners of 286 can access the backyard while fully maintaining themselves on the property of 286 and not have to go on to 284. And 284, which is to the south, has reviewed the plans and is okay with that cantilevered first story addition creating the, the west side side yard setback variance. Other than that, I see it as a reasonable application, and I hope the committee agrees.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, we're in committee? Aaron, you're looking very serious.
I think there's no problem for me to support this application, it's pretty straightforward. But I just want to listen to my colleagues and see if they have any comments.
I would agree, Aaron, I think it's a very straightforward application. I think it's supportable, so if you wanted to move a motion, I'd happy to second it.
Yes, I would love to make a motion to support this application. I don't see any conditions, so that would be my.
All right, so I have a motion to approve the application, moved by Mr. Chang, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? That carries unanimously, thank you. Next item, item number six, 57 Alameda Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a correspondence in opposition from number 59, which is adjacent. And I am showing that property owner as a speaker. So do we have the agent on the line?
No.
Hi, can you identify yourself for the record, please? And then as soon as you've done that, we're gonna start the clock. You have no more than five minutes, because I do show one opposition speaker.
Yes, sure, my name is Musafary from My First Studio. I'm here on behalf of the owner of 57 Alameda.
Okay, go ahead with your presentation, please.
Actually, I think this is a very straightforward case. This is an additional renovation and we are we are doing an extension to the rear of the building plus third floor addition on top. And for the variances, one is the deck projection, which is more than 2.5 meter. If you look at the elevations, the height of the rear deck is more than 1.2 from the ground because there is a steep slope toward the back, so the deck projection becomes a variance. Number two is for the FSI and we are asking for 89 percent, which is very compatible with other approved cases in the neighborhood. Number two, for the number of the balconies at the rear, as you see, we have two balconies at the rear, but the one on the third floor is sitting back and is not projecting beyond the, beyond the rear main wall. So it doesn't cause any privacy concerns. And also, the balcony on the second floor as well is just behind the rear main wall. And these two balconies are just private balconies for the bedrooms and no access from public areas of the houses provided. Variance number four is for the setback on the north side. We are keeping the existing setback and this is only a variance on the third floor. The rest of the house, we are keeping the existing situation. And because of this narrow setback, variance number five is also generated on, on the north side for the setback of the east. And variance number six and seven are regarding the porch and the canopy above that. The canopy covers the same extent of the porch, but both of them are encroaching a bit more than what by law is into the required front. I think this case is very modest and in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and other approved cases in the area. And the planning has more objection to this and seek your approval today, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the opposition and then I'll come back to you.
Sure.
Okay, do you have, is Rego on the line? Hi, Marlena?
Good morning.
Good morning, if you could just identify yourself, name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes.
Yes, Marlene Rego of 59 Alameda. So thank you, yep, thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I've already submitted a letter to the committee outlining our concerns with the seven variances. We live next door, 59 Alameda on the north side, and we haven't met with the applicant or had a conversation about the plans, but we've tried to make sense of the drawings as best as possible. So I'm gonna keep it brief and speak specifically to the first four variances that don't seem minor. So the first one, the extended back deck would project almost four meters from the rear addition. And from the drawings, it looks like the deck stairs will be four inches from the property line on the north side. So you'd be able to directly look into the yard and into a bedroom window on the east wall of the bungalow, and the railings of the deck and the drawing don't look like they're solid or would offer any privacy as well, so that's a concern in terms of the floor space index being 11 percent about, above what's allowable or 30 square meters that would block sunlight on the south side window of the property. There is an existing addition that's a single story, so be pushed back several meters and two floors will be added. A few things also aren't clear about the third variance with respect to balconies. So we feel like the two proposed balconies will impact the privacy because this house will have an additional third story next to our single-story bungalow, and its grade is already above ours, so we're concerned that you'll be able to look directly into our skylight and yard from the upper floor balconies. They've asked for two, not one, which is against the bylaw, and I've never seen another home in the neighborhood with two balconies, as far as I know. But it's not clear on the plans if the proposed balcony railings are are glass, which is also concerning, so not so clear about that. As I wrote in the letter, the side yard setback is being proposed at point two seven meters, which is 10 inches from the property line, if I understand correctly. I think the applicant mentioned that was just on the third story, so I just wanted to clarify that because the bylaw stipulates 1.2 meters. So that's reduced by four times, and we feel this may encroach on our right of way on the north side, which is a concern for maintenance. So once the variances stack together like this, the impact, we feel, compounds and it's no longer minor because there's a proposed front yard setback, side yard setback, rear setback, extended deck, among other asks. So I want to just wrap up by saying that we don't contest the build, we're pro-development, but I'm just not convinced so many variances are necessary or appropriate for a single-family dwelling. That's, that's it, appreciate the committee's time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, any questions for the speaker? Okay, thanks, Marlene. Ms. Musafary, Musafary, are you there? Can you please?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you speak only to the issues raised by the neighbor, please?
Yes, sure. For the deck projection, as you see, the deck is at the level of the third floor like any other house. But as I mentioned, since there is a steep slope toward the back, the height of the deck is more than 1.2 meter, and that's why we have these variants. We have a reasonable size for the deck to just have a, to be able to have a a small furniture, like a small dining table there. And on the north side, on the side of the neighbor, there is one, more than 1.6 meter of setback and I assume accessing the deck is located on that side, so the deck itself has even more setback than required, which is 1.2 meter. About the balcony is located at the rear wall. If you go to the second and third floor plans, the second floor balcony is located on the side of the neighbor and the other one on the third floor steps back and is, is just inset balcony and doesn't have any view to the neighbors. And also on the second floor, the balcony, the rear wall to create a balcony, it steps back and there is no projection. So basically, what I'm trying to say is that if we had the rear wall of the master bedroom where the main rear wall on the first floor is located, the windows of that bedroom would be exactly the same location that the proposed railings are. And I think having a railing or floor-to-ceiling window doesn't change anything in regards to the view, but the windows is not a variance, but the balcony it is. We are also okay to propose a six-foot-high privacy on the side of the second floor balcony to ensure that the privacy concerns of the neighbor are satisfied. And as I said, on the third floor, the balcony is just the inset area and has no view to the outside. The last thing for the setback on the north side, the existing house is a two-story house and the rear addition can be aligned with the existing wall, which is, which has the same setback. And only a portion of third floor that is not on top of, on top of the existing house requires to be 1.2 meter away from the property line. And for the sake of construction and structural support, we are keeping all the side main walls on top of each other, so we are basically keeping the same existing setback. And as I said, even the existing house is two-story and we are not changing much here on this side. This is just the existing situation of the dwelling.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions for the agent, Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. Guys, can we just pull up the rear elevation on this? On this application, please? Yeah, there. So I just want to be clear about which story has which balcony. So the top level, which I think you're referring to as the third story, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the balcony that the staff are just highlighting right there.
Yes, the balcony is on the left side and that's inset area that is like a hole in the wall.
Yeah, yeah, so it projects a little bit. So you mentioned that one of the balconies you were prepared to put higher privacy screening, is that the one you're referring to or?
Second floor.
On the second floor, the balcony for the master bedroom, which is located on the side of the, of host neighbor, we can have a six-foot-high privacy screen there and it can be frosted glass or wood.
Yeah, okay, so that's fine. So the, the, now the ground floor has, also has a deck. So were you planning to put privacy screening on the sides of those, of that deck?
On the side of this neighbor, we have the stairs. I don't think we can install a privacy screen on the side of the stairs, but on the other side, yes, we can. So considering the stairs and the setback of the stairs itself plus that 27 centimeter, we have more than 1.6 meter setback of the deck on, on the side of the.
I get that, but the neighbor too, on that side is concerned about overlook. Can we pull up the side elevation, guys, of that rear?
It should be the other side.
Other side.
Other side, yeah. And just maybe expand that a little. So what you're saying is that it's, you can't put privacy screening on that side because the stairs are there?
But it could go on the other side of the stairs, Larry.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, Carl, I just wanted to be clear about that. I thought that there is an opportunity to put privacy screening on that side.
Yes, if you mean that we can have privacy screen on the side of the deck, but the stairs remains outside of that bungalow.
No, I think, I think we're probably fine with the stairs, but it's, it's when people are recreating or lounging on the deck. If you have privacy screening on the inside of that stair and on the other side of the deck, I think that might satisfy neighbors' concerns for overlook.
Yes, that's totally fine with us. We are okay to have privacy screen on both sides of the deck and also on the north side of the second floor balcony.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The, the neighbor next door referenced all of the balconies, both balconies and the deck. And although you say the third floor balcony is inset, it's only partially inset, there is a portion that sticks out from the building. Could you, and I agree with you, you should have privacy screening on both ends of the deck and on the, the north face of the second floor balcony. How do you feel about screening the third floor balcony? Because the neighbor did actually mention that as well. She's, she's, I think, quite rightly concerned with privacy loss.
I believe the accessible area of the third floor balcony is just the inset portion, but again, we are okay to have privacy screens on both sides of the third floor balcony as well.
Okay, thank you.
Privacy screen everywhere.
Yep, good.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none, let's take it into committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I think that the, the proposal is quite reasonable. I think it's regrettable that there wasn't pre-consultation because I think that many of these issues could have been resolved before coming to committee. So perhaps if the applicant has further applications before this committee, she could undertake consultation with the affected neighbors. Having said that, I think the proposal is reasonable and subject to the screening that's been suggested, which is on the north and the south edges of the main floor deck, the north edge of the second floor balcony and the north and the south edges of the third floor balcony, the application. The application, I, I believe, will not have negative implications for the surrounding neighborhood or the adjacent neighbors. And on that basis, I'd like to move approval of the application, subject to that screening.
Motion to approve moved by Mr. Niffel, including the screening as outlined by Mr. Niffel. Moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven was dealt with, so let's go to item number eight, 128 Sterling Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a covering letter from Michael Bissette, the agent, a previous decision affecting this property, zoning review waiver from Mr. Bissette, the agent, and correspondence in support from 150 to 152 and 175 Sterling Road. I am not showing any opposition speakers. Do we have the agent on the line?
Uh, yes, my name is Alexis Beal and I'm a planner at House Fields and my work address is 3 Church Street, 3200.
Okay, panel members, we have two variances before us. I don't think we need a presentation. Any of you have any questions for the agent? Carl?
Uh, very quickly, thank you, Madam Chairman. Alexis, could you, using one of the drawings that's been submitted, show us where the resident, the residential area is, the closest residential area is? I think I figured it out from the plans, but I wondered if you could point them out.
Yes, give me just one quick second. Unfortunately, I don't have that. Uh, I don't have the land use map in front of me. But I do believe that it is to the west on the other side of the rail tracks.
Okay, that's the closest residential.
Yes.
Okay, so on the location map, it's on the other side of the rail corridor.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clay?
Uh, thanks, Chair. Um, I, I, you know, we'll get to it in a minute. I think this is a really good proposal. But I, I did look at the previous decision on this, this site. And it talks about a rooftop patio, which is great. But there was a time limitation on the approval that set that the minor variance shall extend for a term of four years, expiring in January 23rd, 2023. Is, is that still in effect? Did you get an extension? Have you or your client sought extension or making that variance permanent?
Um, unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not actually able to answer that. I'm not, I'm not sure. I can confirm and get back to the committee at another time, but.
It's not, it's not really before us today, but it might be worthwhile for you flagging this with your client that it looks like the previous approval expired in January. And that's usually done so that folks can assess whether noise and other issues were a concern to the neighboring community. So you might want to just follow that up with them. I don't think it's your main to the application before us.
Okay, I will definitely flag that. Thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? I'm not seeing any other questions. We're ready to take it into committee. Anything you would like to add before we go into committee?
Um, I mean, as I can just say, as you've mentioned, we have received a letter of support from our main neighbor to the immediate north. And they believe that the proposal will contribute to the continued success of Sterling Road area. Uh, the expanded restaurant growth floor area would serve the growing residential and office population surrounding the subject site. And we believe that it would positively contribute to the evolving character of the neighborhood. And that from a professional planning opinion, we believe this application is minor in nature and the proposed variances do meet the four tests and we therefore recommend approval on this basis. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Clay?
Yeah, uh, thank you. I, I, I like this proposal. I think that whole stretch of Sterling into Perth is, is really going, undergoing a significant transition for the better in rehabilitating a former industrial area into an area that is a mixed of residential and commercial. And there's an attraction in there as well. I think this application would continue the successful transformation of this area. So I think it's eminently supportable and I, I'd like to move approval with no conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder, Mr. Chang? So a motion to approve moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Chang. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number nine, 17 Kintyre Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. And no opposition speakers. Do I have the agent on the line? Uh, Frances Scherer? Frances Scherer, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, I'm speaking. Can you hear me?
Uh, now I can. Couldn't hear you before. If you can just identify yourself for the record. I don't think we need a presentation and then I'll see if there's any questions.
Sounds good. Good morning, Madam Chair. My name's Frances Scherer, 15 Grant Street, Toronto, Ontario.
Great. Panel members, any questions for the agent? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I apologize. The, the drawings and the notes in my agenda are very difficult to read. And I just wanted to clarify that the, on the third floor, there's a balcony, but it's, it's just a Juliet balcony. It doesn't have a, a walkout surface. Is that correct?
Uh, yes. So currently, we have a, a permit issued to construct a third floor. That permit, in order to gain earlier construction start time, was submitted representing a balcony on the third floor. The minor variance that is being requested is to change that balcony into a usable bedroom to accommodate for a family size. So we do believe that is a minor variance in order to gain a full bedroom to mirror the floor below. The variance is for roughly 60 square feet or 0.04 of the lot area.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any further questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. We're ready to take it into committee. Anything you want to add before we make a decision on this?
Um, not particularly. We believe this satisfies all the requirements and the four criteria in order to develop in the neighborhood as well as to achieve the desired usability of the property for the owner.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is an extremely minor application. The variance is almost negligible. There is no negative implications to this going forward. I'd like to move approval without any condition.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Mr. Chang? So a motion to approve moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Chang. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number 10, 78 Inglewood Drive. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, seven photographs of surrounding buildings. We have an arborist report and tree preservation protection plan prepared by L. Miley and Associates, a planning justification letter from the agent. We have staff report from natural, from ravine and natural feature protection. And we have, planning is asking for a condition, which I believe is reflected in the revised site plans. And, um, or actually, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one here. Forestry is asking for no conditions and TRCA is okay. So just ignore what I said before. Okay, um, I do believe there are opposition. We have one person in interest. Do we have that individual on the line? So you don't have them right now, right? No? So you, no, no. So, okay, well, let me start with, Mr. Barbini, are you there? Um, Armando's unmuted? Armando, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah, now I can. If you can just identify yourself for the record, and Armando, I'm not sure, but I, after you do that, I'm just gonna try because I'm not sure if we have the person who wants to speak in interest. Um, because if, if we don't, we can probably go to questions. So if you can just identify yourself for the record.
Sure. My name is Armando Barbini. I'm an urban planner and I represent the owners at 78 Inglewood Drive. My address is on file as the applicant, 30 Brickson Terrace. That's in Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, let me just check with staff if, if, if we do have the person who wants to speak in interest. No? Okay. We're not able to get the person. We'll probably try one more time. In the meantime, panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Barbini? Uh, Carl?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Barbini, have you had conversations with the property owner to the north?
The owner of the property has spoken to him early on, just advising him that some activity was, the renovation was going to take place. And then on the weekend, he spoke with him and indicated that he had no real difficulty with it, so.
Okay, the, the reason I ask is you, you've got a balcony on the north corner of the second floor. And normally, we would recommend that there be screening between that balcony and the adjacent property. But the balcony has a, has a unique, well, a, a different form. It isn't a rectangle. And I don't think putting screening on the balcony in total would make any sense. And putting it on just one of the straight edges doesn't appear to block much view. Do you, have you had any conversations about that? And, and/or do you have any suggestions for providing some screening in a way that doesn't basically violate the architectural statement of the balcony?
Um, well, the, yeah, it's, it's difficult to put any screening on the curved, on the curved part of it. Um, I mean, there is a, a partial guard. I mean, there's a guard, obviously, 42 inches, a solid wall that goes that high. I guess before the arc, if you think it's necessary, I can talk to the owner or, you know, we can look at extending that a little bit higher. But you'll see, if you look at the, which elevation is this? The north elevation?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. You can see the, yeah. Yeah, right there on the right-hand side there. So the, the lower porch has a, even though it's open at the back, it has a, a solid, continuous wall up. And then the balcony itself is about 42 inches high to meet with the.
I, I personally, I, I'm inclined to not put screening on it if, if it isn't needed because I think it destroys the architectural statement. The, the reason for my question was whether that had been a point of discussion with the neighbors.
I wasn't involved in the discussion, so I don't really know, but he did have, he did look at the plans and, you know, I don't, from my understanding, and didn't express any concern specifically about that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Carl, I just, no, just as a side note, it's a bedroom up there, which.
Yeah, I know.
Which is challenging were a more actively used part of the home.
And I think if it were screened with that particular form, it would be very obtrusive. So I'm inclined to not put screening on. I just wanted to explore whether there had been a concern expressed. And if there hasn't, I'd be inclined to leave it alone.
I would agree.
Any other questions, panel members? Hey, Mr. Barbini, I'm not seeing any other questions. Is there anything you would like to add before we go into committee?
No, I've reviewed the, the comments from the TRCA and urban forestry. We're well, we've been monitored. We've been dealing with them all along, so we're familiar with the necessary applications we need to make and have no objection to that.
All right, let's take it into committee. Panel members? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I think this is a supportable application. It's, it's a rather nice solution to, to the individual property. The neighbor to the north, it, it appears that there's been consultation and discussion and there doesn't appear to be a concern expressed by that neighbor. Forestry has no conditions. Uh, TRCA has no conditions. I can't see there being a negative implication to the neighborhood from this application. So I'd like to move approval without condition.
Do I have a seconder? Mr. Clay? So a motion to approve moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Um, can we take a five-minute break and we'll come back at 11:21? Okay, and then we'll start with item 11, which is 23 Cavell Avenue.
You want to go see Mr. Squirrel? Let's go see Mr. Squirrel for a second, okay? Let's go see Mr. Squirrel for a second. Okay.
Right now, I just... Carl, Larry, Aaron, are you guys back? Carl, Larry, Aaron? Carl, Aaron, and Larry, are you guys there? We're ready to start. Okay, Larry, it's just you and me right now.
All we need, Chair.
You think? Okay, how about I read what I have before us and... And if we still don't have a third, I guess we'll have to wait, so... All right. Item number 11, 23 Cavell Avenue. The committee has before it a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations, received April 11th, an arborist's report prepared by Al Miley and Associates, correspondence from Mr. Brander, the agent, as well as a floor space index context study. Email correspondence from planning to the agent. We have a staff report from community planning asking for a condition, and three form letters in support signed by 19 and 21, 21 being adjacent, and 28 Cavell Avenue. Okay. Do we have the agent on the line?
Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Adam Brander, and my address is 49 Bolton Avenue in Toronto. I'm the agent for the proposal at 23 Cavell Avenue.
Good morning, Mr. Brander. I do show one opposition speaker, and I believe that this individual also raised the issue I think you may be aware of, of potentially needing to defer this item. And perhaps staff can just speak to that?
Through the chair, it has come to our attention late yesterday that a portion of the proposal was not described in the purpose of the application. A rear two-story addition is also proposed, yet it's missing from the notice of public hearing that went out. So staff have concern regarding improper notice and regarding a revised notice should potentially be sent. So we'll let the agent explain their proposal, and the committee can decide how they want to proceed or not, whether deferral or proceed with the application.
Okay, Mr. Brander. Go ahead. And just as an aside, I checked with staff, and they probably can get you on an agenda mid-June if there is a deferral. But if you can please speak to what Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer just referred to.
Yes. Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to ask staff to explain that we may be given the opportunity to provide an explanation for proceeding today potentially. So I'd like to speak to that first. This is a request to proceed with the application to be heard today. This application technician initially on the project, on the file, sorry, took in the application in January and issued a public notice on March 20th. A new technician was brought onto the file since. And as explained, shared a concern yesterday that description sentence for the proposal, for the purpose of the application given by the former technician, should reference the rear addition component, too. It's my submission that it's known that the full extent of an application cannot be captured in a sentence, and so supporting drawings are relied on, too. Thankfully, the site plan for this application goes out with the mailer as well. And the site plan included written call-outs for the extent of proposed rear two-story addition, complete with arrow markers. So this provides supporting reference in drawing and in words, which was the concern of the new application technician, that words be provided on that. All of the variances are included. Worth noting as well, as the written and drawing references to the rear two-story addition included in the mailer, I'd note that the proposed rear addition has no related variances. Its length, depth, height, and setbacks are all as of right. And without the third-story addition that has been identified explicitly in the purpose sentence, the rear addition element can be compliant with the FSI for the lot as of right. So that is to say, the rear addition element could be applied for a permit as of right, independent of a minor variance, and therefore not necessarily the key purview of the committee for this application. So we feel the previous technician's purpose description can be considered accurate in how it captures the application's variances. Of course, supplemented by the site plan and labels in this mailer, and further supported by the complete application package directed to, on page three of the mailer, to online complete submission items. The homeowners did engage face-to-face with both of their next-door neighbors and some nearby ones as well for better engagement of the scope of the application than the mailer alone. And this garnered some letters of support. Planning is in support. There are no written submissions of concern on the file. And the homeowner is anticipating the possibility of moving into the house later this year. And so proceeding with this hearing today has been anticipated since January as crucial to this point. Happy to answer any questions, but please ask the committee to consider proceeding with the hearing today.
Panel members, do you have any questions? Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. I'm just looking at... You mentioned that the homeowners had discussions with adjacent neighbors. So I've got 1921. Is Kim Scott Wood, 25?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, that's correct. He's on the other side of the street.
Okay. Yeah, there's no address on our correspondence. Okay.
Sorry. Sorry. He's on the other side of the street. It is 28 Cavell. All right.
Who's that? Sorry, who's that?
Kim Scott Wood is 28 Cavell. The homeowners at 25 Cavell were engaged as well, but did not provide a letter of support.
And the extension that you're proposing in the rear looks like it wouldn't really exceed the depth of either of those adjacent neighbors. Is that correct? Or just modestly?
Through you, Madam Chair, modestly.
What's the FSI of the current house?
Through you, Madam Chair. The existing attic on the existing house was used informally as it was discovered by the new homeowners as they took possession of the house. And so the existing FSI is actually below its .5, in the .5 range technically, though the third-floor attic was used informally, not captured on previous permits.
Okay. And any other questions, panel members? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Brander, I'm referring to your email that was sent to Sarah. In it, you made changes to the drawings, but you've indicated that the variances that were applied to the original drawings would apply to the second one, except you say there's one less variance than related. So I just want to clarify. The list of variances we have is the current number you're requesting. The less variance that you're referencing, is that something that was in a previous... A previous iteration of variances? I'm not clear on what you meant there.
Through you, Madam Chair. This refers to variance number four that's on the current list relating to a rear second-story balcony that has been removed from the proposed.
So variance number four is removed, then?
Correct. This is just a request to proceed with the application, but happy to speak to the variances if we're given permission to proceed.
Thanks.
Okay. So just to be clear, we're deleting variance number four?
Yes.
Okay.
And through the chair, there is still an FSI variance that remains on the site, and that is staff's concern that the missing portion of the proposal, the two-story rear addition, was not included in the purpose of the application. And the purpose should reflect the variances sought.
The staff's recommendation is that we should defer this application. That's your recommendation, correct?
Through the chair, staff do have concern that there's been improper notice in this case, and that this would warrant a deferral to provide new notice of the fulsome description of the property and the application.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Can you please give me the objector for a moment? Mr. Levine?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Hi. We're not hearing the application right now. We're only dealing with deferring this potentially. Can you just identify yourself, name and address for the record, and just your take on a deferral?
Sure. Michael Levine, 25 Cavell Avenue. A neighbor on the east, to the east of 23. I guess it could defer. I mean, I have some definitive questions and hopefully some answers, so... But I guess if it's going to be deferred, that's when I'll get the space in the question. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, if it gets deferred, you would register again. Staff would notify you of the date, because we have your name and contact information on file. It would also give you an opportunity to perhaps have any questions answered with... Like, by the agent. So I'm sure you've been listening. So basically, it's... Staff feels that the purpose was, you know, incorrectly sent out, so they feel we need to, you know, redo the notification.
Right. And the purpose actually was pretty much what the owners told me it was like two weeks ago. Because I hadn't received the public hearing notice. At that time, if they came and asked for a signature on, you know, the site to go with the plan, they said nothing would change in the front of the house, and just the third-floor addition and the deck.
I see.
Wouldn't be it. Well, two-story thing, it was a surprise at the moment.
You did get the notice, though. They just talked to you before you...
Yes, I had the notice in front of me.
Okay. All right. So you don't object to a deferral being granted, like, well, if that's what the committee decide? Okay. All right. Well, panel members, let's deal with the deferral. Mr. Clay?
Yeah, I think, Chair, you know, I understand and I agree with the staff's recommendation on this one. I am concerned that number 25... It sounds like the owner may have been under the impression that 25 was supportive, but it sounds like there's some outstanding questions and there's some confusion about what is actually being proposed. So I think this is a candidate for deferral. And if my colleagues don't disagree, I'm happy to move a motion to defer.
Okay. And to staff, we would be moving deferral as amended, correct? Because of the variance four being removed or not? Or do we want to ask Mr. Brander if he wants to keep it there?
Well, through the chair, if they've removed the variance, then when the new notice would be sent out, it wouldn't include variance number four.
So we don't have to mention that, then? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Clay.
Yeah, I'll move deferral.
Okay. And that's seconded by Mr. Niffel. So moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? That carries. Okay. Thank you. Item number 12, 9 Baldwin Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a covering letter from Mr. Leong, the owner, previous decision affecting the property. We have a staff report from planning asking for a condition. Email correspondence from transportation services. They don't have any concerns. Correspondence in support from number 58 Henry. We have the Baldwin Village Community Association in support. 58 Henry, well, sent it in twice. And we have a form letter in support from number 5 Baldwin. Okay. I do show one speaker in interest. Do we have the agent on the line? Hi, Mr. Lee. Hello? Mr. Lee?
Hello?
Yeah, I can barely hear you.
Hello?
Better?
Committee members?
Yeah, much better. You're speaking on behalf of Mr. Leong, the owner, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, it's Alexander Lee, Lehman Building Consulting. Okay? Yeah, on behalf of the owners of 9 Baldwin Street. I believe he's also here in regards to making any comments or answering any questions in regards to the function of the outdoor patio. Okay?
Okay.
You have my... On this... In the system, there was submitted a previously existing committee of adjustment decision for the removal of all parking back in 2005, under file number 80473 backslash 05.
Yeah, we have that.
But the project never... Yeah, the project was never initiated. Okay?
Okay.
In regards...
Yeah, I was just gonna say to you, I don't know that we need a presentation.
Okay.
We may have questions. Are you aware of the planning condition?
Not... No, I'm not.
Perhaps staff can put it on the screen. Do you have a screen in front of you? Can you see the condition?
Yes, I do.
Okay, maybe have a look at the condition. I'll give you a minute to read it.
Uh, what's that? What's the plan? See, purposes screening installed, maintain on the south and west sides. The west side of number five Baldwin is a two-story concrete block wall. So there is going to be screening, but it's sort of redundant, okay? We do have in our notes about the all the operation and no loud music, et cetera, et cetera, as per the bylaw, okay? Which the owner is going to comply with, okay?
Okay, so you're okay with these conditions then?
Yes.
Let me see if there's any questions from the panel. Mr. Clay?
Sure, just a quick one, Chair. There's a large, looks like, single-story concrete structure in the rear or I guess adjacent to the rear of your property. What is that?
I believe it was part of this lot previously, and somewhere about fifteen, twenty years ago, it was severed. So that building became a separate entity, separate from this property.
And do you know what it's used for?
Studio of some sort, music studio. So it's not a residential structure.
Yeah, that's, I was just mostly wondering if that was a rez or an apartment or something, but it's commercial.
Yeah, so the distance of, for the patio to an R-zone is supposed to be thirty meters. Actually, the planning examiner measured it and we measured it, and it's only, it's actually eighteen, well, they're saying eighteen point seven four, but that's to the zone. The bylaw actually says to the lot of the zone. So if we added another, you could add another five point eight five meters, because to a lot of a rez zone, it's on the other side of the lane, okay? If we even measure it to an actual residential building, it's, all the buildings along Darcy, it's over forty meters, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? Mr. Niffel? Carl, you're muted.
I can hear.
Yeah, he was muted. Now you can.
Sorry, my mistake, sorry. Can we just clarify where the planning department screening is supposed to go? Because the applicant indicated that it was a bit confusing, and now that I look at the drawings in more detail, I'm confused as well. Is, can we pull up a, it says the south and the west. Okay, the south is fair enough, but where is the screening to go on the west?
See, there's already screening there, but it's going to be in front of, it's more decorative, but it's going to be in front of a two-story concrete block wall.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
Yeah, and there's already an existing rear fence there on the south side.
Yeah.
So you know what? It's compliant already. So I don't know if the conditions are necessary or not.
I'd be reluctant to remove them, but I'm trying to figure out if there's a way of altering the wording so that you can negotiate with planning, because it does sound odd. I think you raise a legitimate concern that it's a
We're going to be putting up the screening anyways for more of a look for the patrons there.
So you don't have a problem with the condition then?
Yeah, we're not going to have any problems with the
Oh, good enough, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, Mr. Lee, I think we're ready to take it into committee. Is there anything you want to add that's not in the submissions that you
Yeah, the last, the last item talks about an awning and a canopy. The trellis going over this is permeable to the sky. So it was the interpretation of the zoning examiner, okay? But because of the, or similar structure, so really there's no covered portion to this. It's just a trellis system for decorative purposes.
Okay.
Above, okay?
Yeah, so it lets a lot of light in, which is good.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Otherwise, I'll go into committee and make a decision on this.
Please.
All righty, panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I really like this application. It is a tremendous reuse of an area that is not getting any kind of use at the present time. It's adding to tourism, it's adding to providing facilities for the community. As I said, I really like it. Subject to the planning condition, I'd like to move approval of this application.
Okay, and Mr. Cheng?
Oh, and it has support of the neighbors.
Okay, so motion to approve, including the planning condition in the April twelfth report, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Cheng. All in favor? That carries. Okay, thanks. Item number thirteen, one forty-three Rush Home Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, eighteen photographs of surrounding properties in the neighborhood, covering letter from the owner, arborist report prepared by Al Miley and Associates, rental housing demolition and conversion declaration from Tony Henriquez, the agent, and permit to injure or destroy trees from Mr. Henriquez. I don't show any opposition speakers, and we only have three variances before us. Do I have the agent on the line? Mr. Enrique?
I'm muted. Good morning, my name is Tony Henriquez. I'm the agent for this application. I'm at five forty-three Concord Avenue, Toronto, Ontario.
All righty, I don't think we need a presentation. Let me see if the members have any questions for you. Anybody? Questions? Mr. Clay?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, Chair, that the plans showed that there was privacy screening around the third-story rear rooftop deck. Just want to confirm that's the case?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, Mr. Henriquez, we're ready to take it into committee for a decision. Anything you want to add that's not in the submissions?
No.
Okay, thank you. We're in committee. Mr. Clay?
Chair, yeah, I'm, I think this is a supportable application. There's just three relatively minor variances. I think it, while we lament the loss of rental, that's not an unreasonable application for this, for this neighborhood, and it is going to improve the site measurably. I think I'll move approval of this application, but I would like to tie it to plans just because of the screening for the rooftop deck, if that's okay.
Sure. So Mr. Clay moves approval, including tying it to plans. Do I have a second or? Mr. Niffel, all in favor?
Madam Chairman, before we vote, Larry, would you consider a friendly amendment to say that tied to plans to provide privacy screening as shown on the plans rather than all the other details that are on the plans? That's the thing you're trying to secure, and I agree with you.
Yeah, that is. I'm happy with that, sure.
You got that? Okay, all right, so let's vote again then. So the motion is to tie to plans to provide the privacy screening as shown, moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? That carries. Item number fourteen, forty-five Mutual Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, presentation material from the agent, email correspondence from transportation services, they don't have any concerns. And no opposition speakers. Do I have the agent on the line? Mr. Simon?
My name is Brandon Simon. I'm an associate with the Planning Partnership. We're the planning and urban design consultant for the application on behalf of the owner, Ki Wang, and our office is located at twelve fifty-five Bay Street, Suite 500.
Okay, I don't think we need a presentation, but there could be some questions. Let me check with the panel. Panel members, any questions? For Mr. Simon? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's not a question so much as a comment. I'd like to commend you on the presentation material. It was very helpful and very thorough.
Well, unfortunately, I did not get the chance to present to you, but we very much appreciate it. We take this very seriously, and I think it's a great opportunity to provide some additional context and information, so thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions, panel members? Okay, sir, is there anything you want to add before we take it into committee? We've read your presentation material, and as you heard from
Just very quickly, because it wasn't, sorry, just very quickly, because it wasn't in the presentation material, Madam Chair. I just want to quickly, we've had extensive consultation with city staff on this project. It's gone through multiple iterations, and I think we feel comfortable. It represents a very unique representation of gentle intensification and infill in a downtown location. You know, we're fully satisfied that it meets the four tests of the Planning Act and happy to hear the committee's decision.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's really commendable as well, yeah, sorry, Chair.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, I think it's a great project. I mean, it's a perfect fit for the location and what's around it and great use. So, yeah, I think it's great. So with that, let's take it into committee. Oh, Mr. Cheng? Was that a cough or were you actually pointing up your hand?
Yes, I just want to add some comments here. I really like this project as well. And yes, if nobody opposed, I would love to support this application and make a motion to approve it.
Okay. So Mr. Cheng moves a motion to approve the application. Do I have a, Mr. Niffel, seconds? All in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number fifteen, three twenty-two Euclid Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations, presentation materials from the agent, as well as correspondence from the agent. We have a staff report from community planning asking for a condition, and we have correspondence in support from the adjacent neighbor at number three twenty. Do not have any opposition speakers listed. Hey, do I have the agent on the line? Mr. Romanoff?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Sorry, I kept on going on to mute.
Yeah, I can hear you now. If you can just identify yourself for the record
Yes, I am.
See if there's any questions.
I'm architect for the project, three seventy-five Parkside Drive, Toronto.
All right. Panel members, do you have any questions? Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. So this looks to me, is this mirror what is currently either underway or completed at the adjacent house? I think it's three twenty-four.
I think it's very similar to what's going on along the street frontage where we are, yes. I mean, it's not identical to the project next door, and I don't have any relationship to the project next door, but it is a similar proposal, yes.
Yeah, it just looks like the dormer, for example, on the third floor. Looks almost identical. You didn't steal that from them, did you?
I can't say. No, I'm just kidding. I mean, to be honest, the zoning is quite restrictive in terms of how things develop, so it kind of leads you to that solution, I suppose.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, Mr. Romanoff, I'm not seeing any. Larry, did you have another question?
All right, I did. I'm sorry, Chair. It takes me a while to go through my notes. The rear deck, is there screening on the rear deck?
We don't have any screening other than guard height railings.
There is a bit of, I think there is a reasonable expectation. There might be a little bit of an overlook issue there. Would you be okay with privacy screening?
Well, on the north side of the, I would say on the south and the east, west side, we have a glass balustrade. We have further setbacks. Of course, to the rear yard, there's a great setback. To the south, we have a greater setback. To the north, we have a solid guard height. If committee's looking for a taller guard to the north, where we have a very limited setback, we could review that and wouldn't have a problem with that.
Is that, so that's a, is that transparent glass or translucent?
You're looking at the south elevation right now, I believe, if you flip to the north. That's one more, I believe. Yes, so if you look at where the hand is moving right now, so that's guard height with a solid enclosure at, to the guard height, but we could raise that up higher five feet or something of that sort, if committee would like that as more of a privacy and have any counter to the overlook of that location.
Mr. Niffel, did you want to comment on this?
In my notes, I had a suggestion for north and south end screening for that deck. I'm not clear from the answer, are you agreeing to screen the north and the south edges? Or just one, I agree with Mr. Clay, there's potential privacy problem there.
Yeah, I mean, I leave it in committee's hand. We're open to whatever the committee prefers.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Romanoff, ready to take it into committee for a decision? Is there anything you would like to add that's not in the materials we have that you feel we should know before we go into committee?
No, no, the only thing I would add is that we've seen the planning report, and we don't have any issues with that either. The conditions that they've put in.
Thank you for clarifying that. Panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I think this is a supportable application. I do note that it is very similar to, not only the adjacent neighbor, but it's, there are similar rebuilds all along this stretch of Euclid. So I don't think this is out of character or out of place, and I think the the variances before us are overall minor. I did note the front yard landscaping, but it is, I think, due to the property line challenges that many of these inner-city homes face, so I don't see it being necessarily a challenge. I do think it's supportable. I would like to include screening on, I think we said, the north and south sides, privacy screening on north and south sides of the rear third-story balcony. I think there is a reasonable concern about overlook. So I'll move approval of this application, subject to that screening. Planning conditions do note that it's tied to plans, but is that a challenge if we want to put privacy screening on the third story? Because the plans don't include those.
Right, through the chair, you can still add the condition if you wish for the screening, and you can still have the tie to plans. It shouldn't contradict if you're adding an additional condition for privacy screening.
Okay, great, thank you. That's perfect. So I'll make, I'll move the approval of this application, subject to planning conditions set out in the April twelfth planning memo and including a condition for screening on the third-story rooftop patio on the north and south sides, privacy screening.
Okay, with those conditions outlined by Mr. Clay, moved by Mr. Clay to approve the application. And Aaron, did I see your hand up or are you seconding? Okay, and Mr. Cheng seconds that? All in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number 16, 168 Pearson Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, eight photographs of the dwelling, a covering letter from the agent. We have correspondence in opposition from number 169, 166 adjacent, 171, 161 Pearson and 176 Pearson and from the other adjacent neighbor at 170 Pearson. I do show three people listed speaking in opposition. Appears they're all with us, so can I have the agent on the line, please?
Madam Chair, Ian Cunha, representing the owners of 168 Pearson Avenue.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Cunha. I need you to do a presentation, no more than five minutes. Go ahead.
We're asking permission to build two-story infill rear additions, a third-story addition to replace the existing attic and a small front addition. We're also asking to build a new porch at the front, a deck at the back and to convert the basement to a separate unit. We have only three variances before us. My covering letter that I sent was to explain the floor space index being at 101 and the reason is that the basement is being counted as part of the floor space index because the portion above grade is higher than the portion below grade. But this is an existing basement. There will be no way for us to change this to make the basement not count as floor space index. So, the actual first, second and third floors were only at about 72%. The wall height at the, it's only at the back. The front complies. And the other variance is the front yard setback because we wanted to rebuild a little portion of the second floor and that addition is going to encroach on the side, front yard setback by approximately 40 centimeters. Most of the houses on this street are two and three-story older homes in very desirable neighborhood. 142 is a project very, very similar to ours and is under construction right now. 103 was also very similar. Planning department has not commented on this application and both houses next door, if you look at the site plan, actually protrude way past the back of our house into the backyard. So, I believe that the three variances that we have are minor. Like I said, the floor space index really, unfortunately, the existing basement, it is what it is. And as far as the balcony at the third-floor level, that balcony is only to be used by the master bedroom and, you know, I do not provide any screening simply because it's so far back from the back of the houses on both sides. But if it's necessary, we could provide screening.
Okay. I'll have you back after we hear from the opposition and members will also ask questions at that time. Okay, do you have the first speaker on the line? Okay, Jennifer or John, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. It's Jennifer Windsor at 164 Pearson Avenue, 164. You should have a letter from me as well.
Yep, we do. So, you have five minutes. We're gonna start the clock now, so go ahead.
Great. I'm two houses east of the proposed property. I do not feel that the variances being requested are minor. They are blowing out the rear and the front of the property. They are adding an entire third floor. I don't know if they're planning to add any depth to the basement. Maybe they could speak to that. Plus, we have an entirely new rear laneway and you can see that that laneway construction, I believe that's already approved, that that is considerably larger than any of the existing garages. So, my comments would be that this will have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood, that it is entirely out of character, the surrounding neighborhood. I am not aware of development at both the rear and straight up on any of these houses in this neighborhood. I believe some of the existing properties, I'm not sure that the agent referred to, 142 and 103, I believe those third floors are tilted. I don't know the architectural language, but this proposal, as I understand it, is basically straight up, a little bit of a tilt to it. That third floor is a bedroom. I do not understand why such a huge bedroom has to be placed on the lid of that structure. They want to increase the density. They've got the basement. They've got the existing footprint, should be more than adequate. Why an underused master bedroom requires that entire, primary bedroom requires that entire third floor, I do not understand. So, as you can see, I'm fairly emotional, but those are my comments. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, let me see if the members have any questions for you. Panel members, any questions? No? Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
If I could have the next speaker?
Hello?
Hi, can I just ask you to identify yourself, name and address for the record, please?
Yes, this is Michelle Lattimozza from 166 Pearson, the house directly east, east neighbor of 168.
Okay.
Yeah, that one.
We have, you have five minutes. We're gonna start the clock now. Okay, go ahead.
Yes. A place is one of the oldest tenants of geography. Place has numerous definitions such as a space or location with meaning to the more complex definition of an area having unique physical and human characteristics interconnected with other places. This is our place, 166 Pearson Avenue is our place. This is our neighborhood. We've been in the neighborhood since the 60s. It's our home, it's our comforts, our safety and these minor variances, which in our opinion are quite large, significant and impacting, are jeopardizing our place, our right to natural light, airflow, security and privacy. Our first major objection at 166 is the back of the existing structure, the north-facing wall. So, the back of the house, between the house and the laneway home there, they want to ex- wall 1.5 to 2 feet east towards our house. So, that will infringe on my window that I have. In my letter, you'll see photos of it. That window allows us natural light and airflow into our house and we can also see the rooftops and trees of other neighbors from that one window. Yeah, that's the window there. Our house has two children under the age of five and one immunocompromised adult. So, airflow and light is essential for health, well-being and growth and development of all members of this house, particularly those three. Expanding east and blocking that window will ultimately reduce visibility, our natural light, airflow, privacy and increase our hydro bills because we won't have the light, so we'll have to have the lights on in our house and I don't think anybody wants to pay hydro more than they have to. Our current window, sorry, I have notes and my child rearranged them.
Okay, take a minute.
The, so, it's, we're just very against the expansion eastward and it's just gonna take up everything from our main window into our kitchen and to the back of the house. And that's a huge, huge impact and our next concern would be the third-floor expansion, particularly the roof deck or the sun deck or, I don't know, whatever you want to call it. That would overlook and have a view of our entire backyard, which would invade our privacy because currently, as you saw and what Jennifer had mentioned, there is a two-story laneway home that's being built and that, those large windows are gonna look directly into my son's room. It's typically eye level, so we have strangers peering into our back and then strangers peering into our back from both sides, up top from the south and up top from the north. I understand that there are sun decks on, and third floors in the neighborhood, particularly on Yally, but they don't have to deal with three different people, separate families or individuals or whoever's renting to be peering into their, into their privacy and into their day-to-day lives. The construction to the laneway home plus what are considered or have been applied as minor variances to the existing dwelling aren't minor, in our opinion. It's huge. With the construction of the laneway home and the house, the lot 168 is gonna be highly congested and it's not a little construction site, it's a major construction site. With the amount of dust and equipment and changes that are happening, it's overwhelming for everybody in the neighborhood, particularly for us, 166, because we have kids that nap and we have, we can hear everything. It's just the nature of the neighborhood. Everyone's very close. So, what we're asking, we're not against change at all, but what we're asking is for the committee to take into account that a family lives here and we need light and we need privacy and we value these things. And to be quite honest, we feel like those are rights, those are natural human rights to have in Canada, in Toronto and they should be requested and respected and hopefully granted. And that's, that's all I can gather from what's left of my notes.
Okay, well, you did a really good job. You're almost at five minutes and Mr. Chang has a question for you.
Yes, I don't know if it is the terminology that you use, but is there another house at the back that you called it a laneway house, which is already approved, not in this application?
It's, can you hear me?
Yes, I could.
Sorry, there was beeping happening. In the location map, I believe, of the documents or, no, the survey or the plans, section D, the plans. So, what Jennifer Windsor had pointed out was everybody has garages. I guess this is called a garden suite or a laneway home.
It's on the, it's on the site plan.
Excuse me, it's drawing A1. It's drawing A1.
Right, right, right. So, I guess my question, my next question is, I'm trying to help, but that is not in this application. The variances are only three and I guess the may, if you're, if I'm gonna ask you a question, which variance here that would basically have the implication that you mentioned is probably only number three and perhaps a number two, am I right? Because the windows and everything that you talk about is as of right.
The windows is as of right. Also, by extending the eastern wall where my window is, like their eastern wall in their north-facing, where their stairs are, they're gonna be also moving the door to that exit, so the second dwelling exit door, like the back door, it will be moved closer to our window. Currently, the door is there, but they can't see because of the distance, they can't see into my house. But once that door and wall is moved closer, whoever is coming and going will be able to see into our home. A privacy wall isn't an option or a privacy screen isn't an option because that would just further take away our light and our airflow.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions for the speaker? Thank you, Michelle. If we could have the final speaker, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, if I could just have you state your name and address for the record and then we'll start the clock and you have five minutes.
My name is Ursula Nokon and I'm at 170 Pearson Avenue.
Okay, go ahead.
My house is, my house is situated adjacent and to the west of 168 Pearson. As described in my letter, the minor variances applied for by 168 may appear minor, but they are anything but. These variances will have a sizable impact on my privacy, light, day-to-day living and enjoyment of my home. The two properties, 168 and 170 Pearson, have a registered mutual drive or right-of-way which extends from the street to part of the backyard. This creates an open and shared space. With requested variances to the main dwelling and the already-approved laneway house, my privacy will be hugely compromised. I will have two intrusive sightlines to contend with. From all angles and all levels, it will be like living in a fishbowl. The west side of the proposed third-floor deck on the rear addition will look down into both my bathroom and my kitchen. This deck will also extend almost the entire width of the house and the glass doors will span to 12 feet. This will create an overlook issue when I'm in my garden or even on my back porch. The result, I will have zero privacy in my backyard, zero privacy on my back porch, encroaching privacy within my home, in my kitchen and bathroom. The proposed floor space index for the main house is not a minor variance. With the additions, the main house will have an FSI equal to 1.01 times of the area of the lot. The fact that the FSI for the approved laneway home is not included in the calculation for a lot impacts the perception of what the actual site will include and the effect of the variances in total on a neighboring site. So, now they're, they've got the laneway home and they're asking for the legal allowable limit for the height for the main house. The height for the main rear exterior walls will be, on the third floor, will be 9.6 meters, which is 2.1 meters allowable. The limited light I receive on the east-side windows will be further reduced. The main building for which the variance is being sought sits south of my garden. This is where I spend a great deal of my time, nine months of the year. I have a 20-foot row of climbing roses that have been there for over 60 years, originally planted by my father. I also grow a food garden and a proposed height, increase in the height of the rear and side additions. My established garden will struggle to survive. Neighborhoods aren't just about buildings. They're also about green spaces that connect them and contribute to health and well-being. If approved, 168 Pearson will create a looming presence over the backyard streetscape. There is a reason why this neighborhood is so desirable. We are an established community with characters over, with character homes over 100 years old. It's an area where people can live without having someone peer into their windows. I acknowledge that there's a need for housing and healthy neighborhoods should have a mix of housing and residence. We know that there's, that change is coming, but good design should be done with sensitivity to the existing neighbors. To me, 168 Pearson represents an overdevelopment of the site and will set precedent in our neighborhood. Ideally, I would like the variances to be scaled back in terms of height and size, no balcony or reduce it in size, the length of the glass doors to be reduced and that sensitive screening be added to avoid any overlook on the northwest sides. I would like the encroachment on the first, proposed first-floor porch to be removed. It's actually porch roof is jutting over the mutual drive. My concern is also for the metal roof, for potential ice or snow runoff onto the mutual drive, which could cause maintenance issues for snow removal and slipping hazards. I would like to know how they will mitigate this potential problem. I wish that the new owners at 168 had reached out and consulted with the neighbors early on in the process prior to submitting the application for the minor variances. After all, we live here. We could have voiced our concerns on how the potential builds impact us and perhaps we wouldn't be here today. In summary, the combination of the laneway house and the sheer height of the structure at 168 Pearson will have a huge impact on my daily life and enjoyment of my premises. I would ask that the variances be scaled back in terms of height and size and that our concerns for privacy be considered and any changes be tied to the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions.
I'm sorry?
Nope, there are no questions, so thank you, Ursula. Mr. Cunha, can you please speak only to the issues raised and you have five minutes?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, this house, if approved as designed, will be a one-family home, first, second and third floors with a converted basement- will be a one-family home, first, second and third floors with a converted basement with a secondary unit. This, this property, this house, if it was to be overdeveloped, has a lot more space to be able to do additional, uh, apartments if that was the desire of the, of the owner. This is to be used as mostly as a single family with a converted basement. And like the neighbor said, yes, there is a building permit for a laneway suite, which the city of Toronto is uh, pushing for people to, to, to do. Uh, my clients are doing just that. The, the porch at the back that everyone's talking about is only nine by five. It's just to give us access to the backyard. Because under the laneway, uh, suite bylaw, we have to provide considerable amount of soft landscaping in the back, so my clients would like to be able to use the backyard as soft landscaping. So for that reason, the balcony or the porch at the back is very, very small. Um, as you can tell from this site plan, both houses on both sides, one sixty-six and one seventy, way, are way longer and deeper than what we're proposing. The two infill additions at the back are filling in on the left, on the right-hand side where an existing two-story addition already is. So that wall that we're providing now is maintaining the depth of the existing house. We're not making this house any longer than what it is now. The right-of-way is not being impacted in any way, shape or form. It's gonna be maintained. I've done everything possible to reduce the variant, not just the size of the variances, but the, the number of variances. Unfortunately, I was not able to reduce the basement FSI because it is what it is. It's an existing house and we've done everything possible to do a really good design for this project. And I don't believe that a once, a one-family with a basement unit is overdevelopment.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Cunha, Mr. Cheng and then Mr. Niffle?
Hi, uh, I, I have two questions. I thought that the GFA of the ground on the basement is not being calculated in those recent submissions, so that's something I want to clarify with you. The second question I have is, can you tell us how high was that, uh, laneway house that was approved?
Yes, sir. So the, the reason that the basement is being used for a floor space index is because the city has a formula that if there's more of the basement above grade than below grade, the basement counts as floor space index. Because, because this basement does not have a full eight-foot ceiling, there's more above grade than below grade, so it counts. The existing basement counts. That's why we're a one-on-one. In reality, the first, second and third floor should be at about seventy-two percent.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, as far as the laneway suite, the laneway suite was, um, uh, applied for, and we have a building permit based, designed exactly to what the requirements are from the city of Toronto. So the height of the, of the laneway suite is six meters.
Okay, so that's about two stories.
It's twenty feet, yes, two, two stories.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Niffle?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, first of all, I, I'd like to comment that the owners in, or the neighbors, both in their written material and in their, uh, presentations today have said that they wish there had been consultation. I, I'm amazed that you didn't have consultation with the neighbors in this case because perhaps some of these issues could have been resolved ahead of time. Um, having said that, I have a couple of questions. Is the floor space index of one point zero one, does that include the laneway suite?
Uh, no, sir. The laneway suite is the, totally separate from the main house.
So, but the floor space index is the ratio of the space of the main house relative to the size of the lot?
Correct.
I guess I have a question for the staff then about whether or not the laneway suite needs to be included in the floor space index, because it sounds, doesn't seem logical that it isn't. So that would be a question for staff in a second. The, the other question that I had, um, the lady to the east had indicated that as you use the rear yard or the rear door and the porch, that's gonna create a privacy concern for her. And as I look at the um, the porch design itself, it seems to me that a simple issue might very well be to change the location of the stairs. Instead of the stairs going to the north, they could actually perhaps go to the west. Is that something you'd consider as a change? It would then take the traffic away from the neighbor to the east's property line and place it more into the center of your property?
Yeah, uh, of course, but, but like I said, that is not a porch where we're going to have people coming and going because thi- this is going into the kitchen of the, of the first floor. So this is gonna be something that will give us access in the summertime when you wanna barbecue or something to go into the backyard.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that. It's just that, that traffic such that it is, and if your backyard in the summer is like my backyard, that's a lot of people uh, just regularly. Um, it seems to me that a relocation of the stairs to the west side rather than to the north side would address some of the concerns that the, that the lady to the, to the east had suggested.
Absolutely. I have no issue with doing that at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clay?
Yeah, just another reason why maybe pre-consultation might have been a good idea in this case. That, that would have been something that could have been resolved right off the bat. Uh, my question is about the front, though. You're asking for a variance for the front yard setback and you're putting a porch out the front. And I was just looking at the location map and it looks like right now, um, all the you look at the lot fabric along that, that stretch of the street and, and, uh, all the homes are more or less uh, the same distance from the road. It, it looks like you're going to be moving your, because you're putting a big front porch on the front, you're gonna be moving considerably out from you know, so the line of houses that exists there already. So I, I'm just wondering, you, you're only asking so, uh, for a variance of like half a meter. It just seems me, I'm, I'm wondering why your porch has to be, has to encroach into, is it the stairs or is it the porch itself?
Sir, the setback is not to the porch. The setback is for that little proposed addition at the second floor level. The, the porch is not being made any further out than what it is now. It's exactly, okay, so it's not the porch. The porch is staying exactly the same depth, uh, as it is now.
Okay, that, that, that's helpful because it just looks like, uh, well, again, just looking at the location map, it looked like it was jutting out, but if that's in fact the case, then that's fine, thank you.
And if you, if you notice the, the photograph of the house, there is above the, the existing porch, there is, um, um, like a big bay window that is existing and that's what we're rebuilding.
Oh, and so that's what's triggering the variance?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Niffle?
I'm sorry, I should have included this in my earlier questions. Um, the, the top floor balcony is creating a lot of privacy concerns, uh, well, as is the rear addition. I, this is a case where I think the balcony is very questionable. Um, it's, it's, it's off of a master bedroom, it's a fairly substantial-sized balcony. Um, and as you've heard from neighbors on both sides, it, um, it creates some serious concerns on their part about privacy. Uh, I, my question is, would you consider removing the balcony completely? At the very least, it would have to be screened and then I think it, uh, it doesn't become as, as reasonable a space. And I, I question whether you re- really need such a large balcony off of a master bedroom when it's creating privacy concerns for the people on either side.
Um, as per a previous, uh, application that we had this, uh, this morning, uh, the main reason that we're providing a balcony up there is because it's a three-story building. We need a second exit out of the third story and we need to provide-
We could do that without a big balcony, though.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that, that's what I was gonna say next. Uh, the minimum size balcony that we have to have is thirty-five square feet. I, I would be happy to reduce the balcony to thirty-five square feet.
Okay, thank you.
How about the privacy screen?
What, what is that in?
I think it would be the privacy screen on either end.
Sorry, Mr. Cunha, what is that in square meters?
I believe it's four, I believe it's four square meters. It's just enough for the building code to be satisfied as a screaming balcony. And again, I would, I would be glad to put, um, uh, screens on it, not a problem.
Screening on the sides, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He's, he's on the west side, sorry.
Yes.
Any other questions, panel members?
Madam Chairman, could, could we get the staff to comment on the floor space index and the fact that the laneway suite isn't included? Is, is that, is, is that fine? I, it sounds odd to me.
Through the chair, uh, the buildings zoning examiner conducted their zoning review and did not include it in the zoning review. And I know previous scenarios, they do not include the laneway suites in the floor space index.
So the actual floor space index on the property is larger than one point zero one. If you look at what floor space index is, so to just, so it's not included, but the actual amount of floor space relative to property is higher than one point zero one, even if it's not part of the variance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none, uh, let's take it into committee for a decision then. So I guess, I guess before we start, are we looking at, um, moving, having a condition that the deck stairs, uh, deck stairs be moved to the east? And then that the balcony be reduced to four square meters with screening on the east and west side? Okay, anything else? Anybody? For conditions?
Well, I think I can start by saying that the design has been improved throughout discussion, but would have been great that it is done uh, privately between the applicant and the neighbors. Um, I know there's a concern about the square footage, but I think because of the height, that's how it is included. But, uh, cow's a point, the site does have a higher than, uh, GFA, but I think that that's the whole idea of the garden suite. They, they try to make it in a way that the lot had becomes two different detached houses, right? There will be different occupant at the back. So that's almost like cutting off the property into two, almost like a semi within its side. I think that's the whole idea of the garden suite, so I would, I would think the GFA, I mean, the, the FSI is okay in this, in this context.
Mr. Clay?
Uh, thanks Chair. First of all, I mean, this is, this has obviously generated a great deal of concern amongst the neighbors. Uh, in, in this stretch of Roncesvalles, um, you know, there is a lot of history and a lot of, um, unique characteristics to the housing stock. Um, so just acknowledge, uh, all those who wrote in and have spoken today. Um, but having said that, uh, you know, we really have very, relatively very minor variances in front of us. Um, and those variances, uh, in my view, uh, are in fact minor. The, uh, extension to the rear is, is really just a fill-in on either side of an existing two-story. Uh, and I note that there isn't a setback variance, a side setback, uh, side yard setback variance for, for that extension. So even though it is, and it's only going back modestly. Um, so I, I, I appreciate the concern about light, but I don't think in, in, um, in its entirety that it is unreasonable, uh, in terms of the, uh, extent of the rear addition. Um, the height, um, I was looking at the profile and the height, uh, of the proposed structure is, um, uh, just a little bit below the peak of the peak, uh, in the current structure. Even though, of course, it does extend to the front and the rear. Um, uh, it's not, uh, overall, uh, any higher than the existing structure. And there isn't a height, uh, variance with the exception of the, um, of the, uh, rear, uh, rear wall. So, um, you know, I, I, I understand the concerns raised by the neighbors, but I think yeah, from my perspective, the, the variances in front of us are relatively minor. Um, there are some, as Aaron pointed out, there, there are some, uh, proposed changes which I think will make it a little bit better than the proposal that was before us. I would echo everyone's concerns that, uh, these are the kinds of issues that should have been, uh, resolved in the pre-consultation stage. And it's, uh, good if, uh, applicants can do that and, and save some angst in the process. But, uh, in total, um, uh, this is a desirable neighborhood, not surprisingly. And it's not surprising you're gonna get investments of this nature in the, in desirable neighborhoods uh, that are walkable to, um, uh, Roncesvalles and other, uh, amenities. So, um, I, I, I will be supporting this application.
Is that a motion?
Uh, sure, I'll, if, if no one disagrees, I'll, I'm happy to move a motion, um, to approve this application. Uh, subject to, uh, conditions that the third story, uh, deck be uh, reduced to four meters squared and that privacy screening be installed on the east and west sides of that, uh, deck. And that the first floor, uh, uh, doorway exit, uh, be relocated from its current um, uh, spot on the, I guess on the east side of the house to either the center or the west side of the house.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cheng seconds that motion and, uh, did you get everything? Yep, okay. So the motion is to approve with the two conditions outlined by Mr. Clay regarding the balcony and moving the, the stairs to the deck. Um, and that's moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Cheng. All in favor? That carries unanimously. All right, um, I would like to deal with items seventeen and eighteen together. Okay, so, um, items seventeen and eighteen, seventeen is four eighty-two Lansdowne Avenue. Eighteen is four eighty-four Lansdowne Avenue. Um, they both have the same, uh, materials before us, a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Uh, we have orders to comply, um, for both properties and presentation materials from the agent. I do not show any, um, opposition speakers. So do we have the agent on the line? And I, I believe this was a porch that was enclosed with, without permit both halves of the house?
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Mark Oguera. I am the agent. I'm at two fifty-seven Banraven Drive, Toronto.
Okay, so I guess the question is, how come they enclose porches without the permit?
So my two clients, um, they're two elderly people that have lived in the neighborhood for quite some time. Uh, they were approached, uh, to, um, have their porch enclosed and instructed by the company that actually installed it not to worry that it wasn't going to require a permit because there was no structural components being changed. They did so and kind of acted in good faith. But then as a result of a complaint, um, you know, here we are in front of the committee because the, uh, porch that is in existence with its current roof, it becomes enclosed and now becomes part the FSI of the existing house. And that is why we are before the committee to basically, um, ask to maintain the, as it has been previously enclosed, uh, for as many examples on the street, uh, have done so. And they did that thinking that this was normal because of high number of enclosed porches on the street.
Okay, um, panel members, do you have any other questions? Mr. Clay?
Yeah, sure, thanks Chair. Uh, I'm just looking at the Google Maps, uh, image of this house. Uh, it's dated September twenty- this house. Uh, it's dated September twenty twenty-two. Is that the final product? Is that what it actually looks like? Or was there changes made?
Um, I'm not sure. I, I did submit, uh, in my supporting material, the first, um, image of the property is four eighty-two and four eighty-four. Those were recently taken photos. I don't know if the Google image is updated.
That's it.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I, I did see that earlier, but I, I now see it again. Yes, that is what the Google image, so that's, that's what it is.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Is the porch currently heated?
No, there's no, uh, heat in the porch. There's no change to the front facade of the house. Uh, this just allows our clients to use it basically three seasons of the year. They sit out there on the porch, kind of looking at people passing by. And it shelters them from the elements. And because they've lived there so long, um, they thought this was, you know, a neat idea and, and an additional space for them to have without knowing of the consequences behind it.
Okay, any other questions? I think we're ready to make a decision on this. Anything else you want to add, sir? Before we go into committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, no, I believe it is a minor application. It doesn't change footprint of this building. And I ask that the committee consider the approval to maintain it as.
Okay, so let's take it into committee. So, um, I need a motion then for four eighty-two Lansdowne and four eighty-four Lansdowne Avenue to maintain the enclosed porch. Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I'm clearly not supportive of, of undertaking work without the appropriate approvals. But I think in this case, I can, I can understand, um, what happened. Um, somewhat unscrupulous, uh, company has come to the door and convinced these people that they could put some, uh, enclosure around the porch and it wouldn't need permit. And they've acted in good faith and had the work, uh, undertaken. So notwithstanding the fact that's a regret, a regrettable decision and, and misleading one by the owner or of the company, um, I think it's understandable what has happened. I don't think it's inconsistent with what actually exists in the community. There's a fair bit of, uh, enclosed front porch structure in the area. Um, all things considered, Madam Chairman, I would recommend that we, uh, approve the application without conditions.
Okay, do I have a second for that? Mr. Chang? So motion to approve, moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor? So that carries unanimously. Item number nineteen, twenty-nine Mountain View Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have an arborist report prepared by Thompson Watson Consulting Arborists. We have, um, staff report from Transportation Services, um, asking for a condition and TTC also has a condition. We have significant opposition, um, from twelve, twenty-eight, thirty-three, twenty-seven, twenty-five, forty-seven, thirty, thirty-six, twenty, twenty-six, forty-five, forty-nine, eighteen, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-four, thirty-five, um, Mount View Avenue. And we have materials that were submitted with, uh, a preliminary planning justification by Mr. Barton on behalf of, um, several residents, uh, eighteen, twenty, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-five and forty-seven, Mountain View Avenue, as well as a sun shadow study that was part, prepared by, um, Nilu Far Sultani. I do have, uh, quite a number of, of speakers listed here. So, um, is the agent on the line? Mr. Gregory?
Madam Chair, it's Russ Gregory from Gregory Design Group, sixteen Church Street in Markham.
Okay.
Um, I'm here to present and, uh, I'm, I'm sure the committee has received my correspondence from as late as even this morning. Uh, we had a hard time reaching the planner who was writing the report. Um, she had an issue with the, uh, storage area and the front parking pad. And I'm not sure if the committee has received it or not, but we've removed all of that. We've taken away the need for the parking pad.
No, sir, we have not.
And, uh, it was sent to the committee this morning.
Hey, sir, we get our, I just saw you, for the future, we get our agendas, like, the, the Thursday or Friday before the hearing and the supplemental, uh, comes the day before. So anything after that, we don't see it? For your information.
Okay, if I could just explain, I received her email on Wednesday last week and immediately asked to speak with her. And we ended up not talking until Monday morning, uh, this week. Um, she expressed her issues with having this parking pad and the extension of the roof line, which we have eliminated. We have taken it back to the existing front porch that's on the house. We have eliminated the need for four of the, uh, variances being number one, uh, the front yard landscaping, number four, the, uh, canopy or awning that was going over this, uh, new carport or storage area. Um, number five, the proposed use of an outdoor storage, it's now been removed, as well as number seven. Um, so we only require now to have items two, three and six as they're listed in the zoning bylaw notice, um, to look at today with committee. Um, my, as I said, I apologize to, uh, to the.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but staff just wants to weigh in here. And I'm assuming that because I have a significant number of speakers, have you, like, this has not been discussed with the neighbors either?
It has not, Madam Chair. We sent a note, a letter to them, to ten or twelve of the neighbors and received no correspondence back, only to find out yesterday morning or the, the afternoon before, I'm sorry, that there was a long list of, uh, opposition.
Um, okay, so Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer would like to say something?
Through the chair to the applicants, can you please see your public hearing notice? It's on the screen right now. You were alluding to removing variances, uh, but you mentioned the zoning review notice. So can you please look at the public hearing notice and just confirm which variances, uh, clearly that you are seeking to remove from this list? Just so it's clear on the record.
Yes, through, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, number one can be removed. Number two, we would ask to keep. Number three, um, we would ask to keep. Number four can be removed. Um, number five can be removed. Number six, we would ask to keep. And number seven can be removed. All of those pertain to the, uh, proposal we had for the outdoor storage at the front of the house.
Through the chair, Agent, if you could please just look at the description on the public hearing notice, the purpose of application, and clearly state how that is being amended.
Um, through the chair, would you like me to go item by item? As I've, as I've stated, we removed the outdoor storage area.
Do you see the purpose? What staff is asking is how you want us to alter the purpose, like the wording in the purpose, what needs to come out?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes. Instructing a rear two-story, oops. Rear basement walk-in, ground floor deck, second floor, also to, yeah, it can be removed also to permit an outdoor storage use in the front yard.
And remove the front canopy?
Yes. Is there a front, oh, sorry, there is a front canopy here. Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I guess panel members, before we go any further with these revisions, uh, do you feel, does anybody feel the, we need to consider a deferral or not? Mr. Nipfel?
Um, Madam Chairman, I, the committee members, I'm sure we, we're all able to follow what's happened. But, um, I think it may be unfair to the, all of the people that are opposed to try and digest at the last minute what's changed and to then adjust with their particular present, their presentations to committee. So, um, I, I would like to know whether or not the people that are, um, going to speak would see a deferral as, uh, an acceptable way to proceed. If the majority of them were in favor of a deferral, I think I would be inclined to support that. Um, the, the, and I understand the applicant's position as well. He couldn't get a hold of the planner and therefore he couldn't make the changes earlier. But, but it is a very, I think it's a difficulty for the people that are opposing to try and digest what's happened. Um, and I'm sure a number of them are going to be confused by what we've just heard.
All right, um, anybody else want to comment on that before I go through the list of speakers? Panel members, any, everybody agree with Mr. Nipfel's suggestion?
I'm happy, I'm happy with canvassing, although I think, you know, a lot of the opposition, uh, when they were writing in, appeared to be concerned with the front, um, the front treatment. So this might satisfy some folks a little bit more. But yeah, let's canvas them.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Gregory, I'm just gonna canvas, um, I have six speakers. I have four who are listed but don't want to speak. So let me start with, um, the first one, Staff, uh, Hill.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, um, Joanne Holt or Alex Hill? Not in the group? Okay, Wanda?
I'm here, but I'm on the telephone.
That's okay.
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me, Wanda?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm on the telephone. Um, I wouldn't mind deferring it. However, um, most of my concerns are with the back, not the front. The back is extensive. And, um, I, all I'm going to do is like, so I would, uh, like to, uh, have a deferral, um, if everyone else wants a deferral.
Okay, so we're only dealing with the deferral now, so I'll just move down the list if you don't mind?
Yeah.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thanks, Wanda.
All right.
Um, Mr. Barton?
Good afternoon. Uh, yeah, so just speaking to the deferral, a couple of quick things, I just wanted to be clear of, is that I am representing twelve members
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of this community that, that originally intended to speak, but they, they agreed to let me speak on their behalf, you know, because of the, the concerns about efficiency of the hearing and, and the timing. So my one concern would be, you know, providing opinion of all twelve of those members with respect to a deferral. I do know that variances three and six that remain are particularly concerned. They speak to the, the amassing and, and impact to the neighborhood community, uh, as well as the neighboring properties. And so it appears those will stay as, as part of the revision to the application. So in my report, I focused on those two variances. I didn't speak too much to, uh, the variances that have been removed. So from my perspective, um, what I would advise, the, the clients I'm representing is that, um, you know, it doesn't change my opinion. However, I, I wouldn't want to provide an opinion on all twelve of these members in terms of the deferral. That, that would be my concern, um, with that.
You don't want to provide an opinion then on the deferral, is that what I'm understanding?
What, what I do know is, I, I think they, you know, everyone's been waiting since nine o'clock this morning to, for it to come up. And, and I did advise them that there was a potential this could be deferred. Um, but again, we haven't discussed whether, um, you know, we would want to generate a deferral based on these changes.
Okay, so you, you have no opinion then because you haven't been able to speak to your clients on a deferral? Is that, as I understand?
Um, my, my opinion as planner and the representative is that the, the removal of these variances does not change the, uh, material impact of the proposal and the variances to the character.
Okay, I, I understand that. Um, it's just, I'm just dealing with the deferral, whether you're okay with it. And if, I know that, um, whenever in cases like this, we do grant a deferral, and I don't know what the committee is going to do after I've canvassed everybody, but that we would, um, want, uh, community consultation to be part of any deferral, should it be granted, which would then give you an opportunity to perhaps address some of these issues you raised in your, in your extensive, um, presentation, which was, you know, very good, by the way, and explanatory. So I, um, anyway, I throw that out there, but I understand you haven't spoken to your clients about a deferral. So I'll just, I just won't mark you down as either way then. Is that what you want me to do here?
Um, yeah, I know there are a couple of other speakers on that will probably have, um, a gauge of maybe where some of the other members that community are coming from, particularly Mark Payne, who's, uh, who's registered to speak. So I'd, uh, I'd welcome his thoughts too. Um, but what I would.
He's the next one on my list, so.
Yes.
All right, so let me move on to the rest of the people then. So if I could have, uh, Mr. Payne, please, thanks. Hi, Mr. Payne?
To Mark, to Michael's, yes, to Michael's point, um, I do think that the committee, um, sort of the community here would probably like to proceed. Um, I think some of the bigger challenges were related to variances which still stand. Certainly those, um, elements that I would like to speak to, um, are still present. Um, and some others who are also been on the phone waiting patiently all day. This has certainly been a big impact to my day. Um, I would be reluctant to have to come back and go through another, you know, three hours worth of waiting to speak in turn, which is going to be essentially the same speaking points which I have now. So I, I, I don't recommend to defer.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have Mr. Adler's? Hi, Mr. Adler's?
Um, I, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I hold a similar, uh, position as Mr. Payne just stated. Um, a majority of my concerns do not have to do with the front of the property, even though that is something I raised in my written submission. Uh, I was prepared to speak, um, primarily to the issues related to the back. So I would be willing to continue.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Um, Sandra Best? Hi, Sandra?
I would not want to deferral.
I'm sorry, I, I, you cut out there. You do not want to deferral?
Sorry. Yeah, I, I would not support a deferral.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, so panel members, um, looks like the majority of people here would rather, um, that we proceed. So, um, let's go ahead then. So Mr. Gregory, uh, you have the floor. You have five minutes to do a presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, um, this is an existing two-story house, a brick house at number, uh, twenty-nine Mount View. Um, the owners took possession of it recently this year. And, uh, we have designed a, a two-story, three-story addition to the back of the house, as well as some interior renovations to the house. They did want their outdoor storage because of having electric cars and the need to get near their house to plug in. But, uh, the owners have agreed to remove that need and deal with it somewhere else. Uh, when I made this design, uh, I was cognizant of how close everything is to lot lines. It's only a twenty-five foot lot, seven point six five meters. Um, I looked at other houses in the neighborhood and saw several of them with a third floor added to the building, whether it was visible at the front of the house or completely at the rear of the house or completely at the front of the house. And, um, there isn't And there is an example, just two doors to the north, where they have put a third floor on, and that was the basis and the crux for my ideas and the owners, was to do something along the lines of what they have done. Looking at the site plan, if the committee, and I'm not sure if the committee's been out to the site to, to view it or not, but looking at the site plan, we are not extending out as far as the house to the north of us. We, I did pull the walls in to maintain at least a two-and-a-half-foot side yard. That way, there's no need for worries about brick walls, it will be a stucco finish to it. My belief as a planner for over 40 years is, it does meet the four tests in the bylaw, or in the Planning Act, I'm sorry, and meets the intent of the official plan, the zoning bylaws. I think it is contiguous with the neighborhood and it would enhance the neighborhood. And yes, it's arguable if the variances are minor or not, but it does meet up with other houses in the neighborhood itself. I'm seeing the elevation that's shown there, and obviously, we don't have that little piece on the front. I've put back in the full porch that exists on the house today, and that won't be changed. Everything else on the front of the house is pretty much exactly the way it was. I, I did increase the, the scope of the roof on the second floor a little bit, and that was done more to hide some of the third-floor wall from the street. I know the neighbors have come en masse to oppose and object. As I said earlier in my opening comments, we did give out letters to neighbors asking for comments or their support and received nothing. And we're quite surprised that there was such a large group that would come back after us asking that, but that's not untypical either. Looking at the side elevation that's shown right now, you can see I've maintained the size and shape of the existing two-story house with its shed roof, shed gable roof, and I've built the third floor into that roofline and extended it out to the back. I know there is quite a bit of conversation about screening from second and third-floor balconies, we're open to discuss that. We've maintained all the windows that are on the side of the house, there's nothing new added there or on the north side. And the windows shown on the addition are four feet back off the lot line. I've kept the massing as simple and easy as I can and kept a very low-profile roof to cover the third floor. At one point, I did have a flat roof on there, but it certainly didn't make the house attractive at all, so we decided to go to a peak roof. That is an option though, but height of building is not one of our variances, it's more to do with the, the three-story wall in stucco that's shown on the left-side elevation. The owners are very anxious to, to start construction. We are ready to go in for a building permit at any point in time, should this committee see fit to support our, our small variances. And if I can just touch on our discussion with the planner, Brunna Negro.
You're at five minutes, so if you can make it really short, please?
Yes, if I could just explain, the planner was not prepared to write a report because of her support for everything else other than the front covered area. I'll finish at that and then I can answer questions, if that's okay, Madam Chair?
Yeah, that would be great. I'd like to go to the opposition. Before I do, Mr. Niffel has a question.
Just to clarify for anybody that's speaking, on the side elevation, could you, can you just confirm that the projected roof and columns that's shown at the front, they're not there anymore? The, the proposal ends at the porch, right?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, that's correct. That whole front piece has been taken off.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so if I could go to the first speaker, do you have them now, or, yeah? Okay, so, hi, so who, I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, my name is Wanda Palowski, and I live at 27 Mountview, so I'm next door to the 20, 29 Mountview. And I've lived here for 66 years, and I support everything that Michael Barton has written, and I'm opposed to the variances because they're not minor, they're major. Other houses have been renovated on the street, but none of them have requested such major variances. Now, the house that was mentioned, that a third story was built, that house already had a third story. All they did was square off the back section. That doesn't mean they built a new third story, they actually just squared it off. I'm, I'm opposed because the back extension is so long that I won't be able to see, my view will be obstructed, and I'll be staring at a three-story-high wall. The building itself that they're proposing to build is too large for the size of the lot. Our lots on this side of the street are not as long as others. So the whole building is overpowering. So I prefer that the build, the people who are building use the footprint of the original house and not extend to as much as extending at the back. Once they extend it and then put on a deck, there's maybe two meters, three meters to the, to the next outbuilding, because there is an outbuilding back there. So there's no garden, there's no view, there's nothing. Why, why bother having a deck if you're not looking at anything? So I'm opposed to their proposal to build this structure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Wanda. Panel members, any questions? No, thank you.
Okay.
All right. You have Mr., yeah, Mr. Barton? The, the first one never showed, right? In, in time? No? Okay. Hi, Mr. Barton, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, sorry, I couldn't hear you for a second. All right, so, thank you very much. Just a couple of things just upfront. I just wanted to note again that I am representing 12 members of the community that had previously individually registered to speak, so just wanted to point out that that doesn't downplay their concerns that they have for the neighborhood by not speaking, they just wanted to make sure that there was efficiency in the hearing and that their, you know, the, their, their issues were brought across cohesively and, but again, not to downplay their concerns about the proposal, they originally did intend to speak. When I looked at the Application Information Center, I see that there are 18 letters of opposition formally registered versus 27 properties that are in the immediate context of this neighborhood, so that's quite an engaged opposition against this application. I, I wanted to know, I did understand that the owner of this property has spoken directly with, with at least some of the members of the community, so I did hear that there had been no feedback to the, to the owner, but that's not my understanding. I, I won't pretend to know the details of those discussions, but I was informed that the owner did actually speak to at least some of the members of the community about their proposal and plans for the property, which only raised more concerns for them, actually. So is, in my preliminary planning review that I submitted, I chose to focus on the variances three and six that were, and so they still remain in the application, so those really refer to the size of this dwelling, so the floor area and the height of those sidewalls. So I did see that there was no planning staff report. One key element here is that I think the, the drawings that you have submitted on file need to be taken into consideration. So any, should, and I know a condition that planning often recommends is that any decision include a condition, that it be in substantial conformity with the, so I would ask that any decision of the committee that comes today is, includes that condition, that the drawings and the purpose as stated in the notice is, is tied as a condition to the decision of the committee. So in terms of the correspondence that I sent, I think you've had a chance to review it in detail, but really just the key elements that I provided in my executive summary really does give you a good breakdown of the key elements. So being that the subject property currently has a two-story dwelling on it, we see that it has similar character, which include the height, the length, depth, and then overall massing compared to the rest of the neighborhood. A pitched roofline that tapers down from front to back with just a small portion of that sidewall height being at its peak. So we see that the rear wall is consistent and harmonious with the, the neighboring properties to the north and south. So when I look at the, the surrounding physical neighborhood, which I had defined in my letter, a broader versus immediate context, again, with the immediate context, seeing two and two-and-a-half-story single and semi-dwellings, with the two-story sidewall height that tapers down from the peak heights towards the front and back. For the properties that do have floor area above the second floor, it is smaller than the grounded second floor and also incorporated into the roofline, so this brings down the overall height and sidewall height as opposed to having a full three, third-story ceiling height and floor area structure. So the effect of the, the requested variances, particularly three and six, is that you're going to see the greatest amount of density, bulk, and height that is in this neighborhood as a result of building this. So this isn't going to be consistent with anything that's there now. The floor area will be double the performance standard that's there today, and, and the recent, there's recent variances in the neighborhood that I had identified that were for a 37 Mountview and 34 Mountview. Those had FSI's of .9 and .8, so that .9 really represents the highest that the neighborhood has seen. There's no other variances in the neighborhood for FSI. The sidewall height does not exist with any frequency in this neighborhood, so again, really speaking to the prevailing neighborhood character. So my opinion is that this neighborhood is predominantly dwellings that have not undergone minor variances to allow them to exceed the, the performance standards. So there's a relative compatible and harmonious built form in the neighborhood. So in my opinion, we're not going to see the purpose and intent of the regulations for FSI to control that, the floor area relative to the, to the size of the lot and what that means for overall massing. And similarly, that, we're not going to see that these variances are minor in nature, that the, the requested relief's not maintain the neighborhood character. And again, so my opinion is that the four tests are not satisfied through this proposal, and I would ask that you refuse the variances.
Thank you very much, sir. Panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Barton? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Barton. Mr. Payne?
Yes, hi, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mark Payne, and we live at 31 Mountview, just immediately north and adjacent to the applicants. I agree with everything that Michael's stated, as, as far as the points covered, but I did want to specifically highlight the impacts that these proposed variances will have to us. Specifically, we have major concern with the variances which speak to the FSI and height resulting in a massive increase in house size, scale, and bulk. Proximity, sorry, proximity is also a major concern. Adjacent houses are separated with walkways, not driveways. Even the rear projections of our homes are significantly set back on both sides from the subject lot, but the proposal shows no similar accommodation, in fact, variances are being asked for. The variance from .6 FSI to 1.11 FSI is not minor, and of course, is not even considered a fully finished walkout basement, which contributes to overall living area. This far exceeds any of the other renovations completed on the street, as Michael mentioned most recently, the 34 and 37 Mountview, which respected the intent of the bylaws and community characteristics with their own extensions. We've lived here for 20 years and bought the property in part due to the view of trees and open sky to the south. If permitted, our property would be subjected to adverse and significant shadow effects, severely limiting the sunlight which comes into our home. Our architecture is unique in that we have no north-facing windows and have no rear windows from the kitchen, although you couldn't tell that just by looking at the floor plans. There are photos enclosed. Our kitchen has only one window, which allows direct sunlight to flow in and affords us a limited view of the surrounding trees and sky. Shadow impact also will impact our dining room, family room, lower bathroom, upper bedroom windows, as well as most of the second upper bedrooms. There's also photos enclosed for that. The majority of our home's sunlight does come into these windows, the proposed extension would completely block all direct sunlight and the feeling of openness and present us with a constant view of a large three-story wall only 10 feet away. We were so concerned about our shadow and impact and lack of sunshine that we paid for an independent sunshade study by KH Davis Consultants, whose report has already been submitted. The summary of the report states, "It is clear that the proposed addition will keep the rear south and eastern-facing windows in constant shade and block sky and tree views. The proposed addition will block the light during all test times and dates. The proposed mass and scale at 29 Mountview compared to neighboring houses will be much greater, and this will adversely affect the amount of sunlight 31 Mountview receives." Since there are no windows on the side elevations except for the light well, aside from the front elevation, the noted light well where our windows are shown is crucial for providing light to the dining room, kitchen, second-floor bedrooms, as well as the basement, bathroom, and family room. The shade study does not include proposed balconies at 29 Mountview in the model, which will add further to the shadows thrown on 39 Mountview building and grounds. There's also an enclosed 3D modeling diagram, which is two of them, which show the comparative mass and scale of the proposed building in comparison to 21, 31, and 33 Mountview. The enclosed shade models also clearly demonstrate the resulting impacts of shadow at 9:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m., and 3:00 p.m. At all times in the day, the main light source in the home will be under constant shadow, and of course, our view of sky and trees again will be always completely blocked. At noon onwards, all windows will be in shadow, and then in the afternoon, all garden will be in shadow. This will severely limit our enjoyment of the property and negatively impact our quality of life and our family's psychological well-being, as we'll feel like we're being living in an enclosed box. This will also significantly adversely impact our property value and resale opportunity. The proposal calls for second and third-floor balconies, as well as a lower deck extending even further into the lot, reducing green space. In addition to our privacy concerns regarding the balconies overlooking onto our property and into our immediately adjacent bedroom windows, they also add further bulk to the building and shadow on the ground. In closing, it is understood that when a new owner purchases the property, they are cognizant of the surrounding community and neighborhood and the circumstances wherein the property resides, with associated zoning and bylaws in effect. All prospective homeowners should be able to modify their homes and beautify them as desired, this is to be expected. However, it is also to be expected that existing homeowners have rights which will be upheld and proper, reasonable, and unimpeded enjoyment of their homes be maintained as much as possible. The extension and mass and scale of this three-story proposed building is not reasonable within the neighborhood or the lot, does not meet the tests, is highly obtrusive and undesirable, and have a significant negative impact on our rightful enjoyment of our property regarding view, privacy, sunlight, airflow, and openness, and should not be allowed. Prefer we ask you for, to decline these variances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Payne, panel members, any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Mr. Adler's?
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Edward Adler's. I am the owner and resident of 25 Mountview Avenue. I share a mutual driveway and a backyard space with one of the previous speakers, Wanda Palowski at number 27 Mountview, who is one of the immediate properties beside the subject property. I stand today to register my formal opposition to the proposed variances. In addition, I would also like to state that I'm in, I'm in agreement with the positions already raised by Mr. Michael Barton and my fellow residents of Mountview Avenue, who are also represented by his testimony today. I oppose the requested changes for several reasons, and they include, first, that they are not in line with and do not maintain the overall general purpose and intent of the city official plan or zoning bylaws, that the variances are in fact excessive and major, not minor in nature, and are not desirable for the reasonable and appropriate development of the lot. First off, the applicant seeks to almost double the permitted dwelling size in relation to the area of the lot, which is currently permitted. This includes the addition of a three-story complex with a basement plus a deck, extended balconies. Doubling the permitted building footprint, ladies and gentlemen, is a major variance, not a minor one. Granting this variance sets a precedent for creating what is commonly referred to as a monster home in a well-established area known predominantly for its two- or two-and-a-half story detached homes that also include open green story detached homes that also include open green spaces in what is otherwise a small and tightly constructed group of lots. I submit that allowing for this major variance is not in line with the intent of the city's zoning bylaws or official plan, or the relative consistent characteristics of the rest of the homes in the neighborhood. The lot in question simply cannot justify such an excessive increase in coverage without negatively impacting the neighborhood's century-old character, the immediate green space since much of, since a much larger percentage of the back will be occupied by structure, and the surrounding properties that will now face what is essentially a giant wall that occupies a large section of the lot. Second, the significant increase in height and the addition of overlooking balconies as well as the overall footprint will have negative impacts on environmental considerations, including reduced light patterns, as we've just heard. As Mr. Payne mentioned, a report by KH David Engineering Consultants concluded that the proposed structure will significantly alter light exposure to the surrounding area as well as block sky and tree views. The proposal also introduces privacy concerns related to the two- and three-story proposed balconies that will now overlook neighboring properties. I would like to clarify to members of the committee that as a homeowner myself, I'm not against the idea of being able to modify the property that I purchase. However, consideration into how my neighbors and the neighborhood overall will be impacted by my decisions must also be taken into account. In addition to respecting existing bylaws and plans within reason, which were put in place for a reason, changes must also be harmonious with the character of the neighborhood as a whole, and in particular, the immediate neighboring properties. Finally, I would certainly expect some effort of consultation with at least the most immediate neighbors, which was really not the case in this situation. Now, previous reference was made to a letter that was sent out to some residents. However, I'd like to point out that the letter, which I did receive, was simply an introduction or a greeting from the new homeowners and did not detail in any way their plans for the property other than to say that they plan to conduct renovations. So simply objecting on something that we do not even know what is planned, I submit to you is unreasonable. So in conclusion, I urge the committee to reject the variances requested for number 29 Mountview Avenue. These variances are significant, they're not minor, and are simply unreasonable and not desirable for the appropriate development of the lot. They also do not maintain the general purpose and intent of the city's official plan or zoning bylaws. I thank the committee for your time and your consideration in this matter, and I yield the rest of the time back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Adlerz. Panel members, any questions for the speaker? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Sandra?
Oh, hi. Sorry, I have already deferred my time to Michael in the interests of moving things along.
Oh, okay. Thanks. All right, so, Mr. Gregory? Are you there?
There we go. Sorry about that. Yes, Madam Chair?
So you have five minutes now to speak to the issues raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start with the shadow study that I saw from the complaints about windows being blocked and sunlight being taken away. I'd like to just point out that the addition to our building does not go out as far back as the next-door neighbor's two-story addition goes. We are four or five feet shy of that. You can see that on the site plan. I'm just making points here that when I see shadow studies in situations like this, they don't seem to tell the honest truth. This two-story addition on the neighbor's house at number 31 is doing exactly the same as what our plan is doing to them. It's, it's, it's well inside the lot lines, it's acceptable, we're not asking for side yard setbacks, but I don't think it's fair to say that we're shadowing their building as much as we are. There will be no trees damaged or taken down or injured in this entire process. We do have an arborist report. The length of the dwelling, again, I'd like to say we're not as far back as the neighbors to the north with their two-story addition. We're four feet shy of that, three or four feet shy of that. And again, that's one of the things that I took into account when I was doing this design with the owners. So the length of dwelling in comparison to the neighbor's, it doesn't match the length of their building. There was a little attack given on the front elevation of the house, and I truly believe it's, it's a beautiful addition to the house, a beautiful renovation to the house. I think this is a gorgeous house as it is, and having the third floor back on the roof doesn't make a lot of impact on the front of the house at all. There was mention of the balconies overlooking the yards, where the owners would like to not have to put screening up. They are prepared to put screening up on both sides if need be. That could be a negotiating tool. And yes, we're willing to, to look at screening as a distinct possibility to solve some privacy issues. I'll go back to the planner, Bruna Negro, that I spoke with, and her words were, she had an issue with the outdoor storage space. Other than that, she was not prepared to write a report to the committee because she felt that the other variances were minor in nature and met the four tests. So there has not been a report submitted to the committee of adjustment because the planner felt it was appropriate planning. Again, I would ask this committee to take this to heart and realize that the owners are new in the neighborhood, they would like to build something very similar to what they have, and not to repeat myself, but the four tests have been met from the Planning Act, and I would ask the committee to see fit to approve our three variances that we've got left.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gregory. Let's see if there are any questions. Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. Mr. Greg, I'm sure you've, I hope you've had an opportunity to read Mr. Barton's report. One of the things that stuck out to me in his presentation was his analysis of FSI's in the neighborhood. He indicated that there really wasn't, and he took a fairly broad view of the neighborhood, there really wasn't an FSI increase over 1.0. Did you do any analysis of the FSI? Looks like there are large homes on this street. Like, have you done any review of what FSI is in the neighborhood?
Madam Chair, if I can answer Mr. Clay. I don't believe the FSI is entirely a good watermark because there are differing sizes of lots in the area. The FSI is, of course, based on lot areas, and if you do have a longer lot, your FSI could be smaller. I look at square footage of the neighboring houses, and in my estimation, what's been added on is very comparable, what's been added on in several houses in the neighborhood is very comparable to what we have for a net floor area. The FSI is more a ratio of the lot area sizes, and as soon as you get a lot area that's bigger, obviously that number can be, that FSI number can be reduced. I don't know if that answers your question. No, mine was a visual examination of the area, and I've been down there two or three or four times to take a look at other houses around, and my feeling is this fits right in with the fabric of the neighborhood. It's an area in transition, maybe not directly within five houses of this house, but the area itself, there is a lot of new construction and a lot of upscale, larger, three-story addition. And just to add to that, I guess, I'd like to reiterate, we're not, we're not here for a variance for the height of the building either. The height of the building is, is less than what the bylaw allows us, and it clearly allows a third floor. So anyway, sorry, that's a little off topic.
No, I, I, I think we all fully understand how FSI works, and it is a measure of whether the lot can accommodate the amount of floor space that is being proposed. So I'm just trying to get a sense, I, I know this neighborhood reasonably well, and there are larger homes. I'm just trying to get a sense of relative scale.
Again, through you, Madam Chair. As I say, I have traveled closely in that little part of the neighborhood, and I honestly don't feel as a designer that this house is out of scale or out of place in the neighborhood. There's some beautiful, gorgeous renovations, and this would just add to it. We're not increasing the width of the house on the property. As a matter of fact, when we get back to the addition, it has been brought in from the lot lines as to not create too much crowding on the lot, on the side lot lines, nor for south.
Thank you.
Okay, panel members, anyone else have a question? Okay, let's take it into committee then.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I have some mixed feelings on this application. I do think that the designer has successfully tried to integrate the third story into the front elevation in a way that it won't impact detrimentally the community character. So I, I mean, I'm inclined to agree with the applicant in the way he's treated that. I also think that the changes that have been made in removing the storage area in the front yard and so forth are all desirable. I do have real concerns about the addition at the back. As people have said repeatedly, it's basically a three-story block wall, and it's creating rather severe light and privacy issues for existing residents. And as one of the people indicated, notwithstanding the fact that applicants have the right to, homeowners have the right to alter their dwellings, it needs to be done in a way that is compatible and respectful of the surroundings. The fact that there was no consultation here speaks badly for the, the application in my view. I, I'm losing patience with people that come to committee and don't bother consulting with people beforehand. It wastes everyone's time and usually results in proposals that are problematic. I think the three-story unchanged wall, there's, there's no setback, there's no alteration. I think that's, that's an affront to the property owners on either side, and it is further a problem with the balconies at the back. Having said that, I'm not prepared to support the application in its present form. I would be prepared to look at alterations that would allow it to be more comfortably positioned with relative, relativity to the neighbors, but at the present, in the present state, I think that the rear elevation is a problem.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Clay?
I, I've thought very carefully about this one. I think carefully about them all. But I, in summary, I, I agree with what Carl just said. I might put it a little bit differently. I am concerned about the FSI being excessive relative to the surrounding. I'm convinced, I was convinced by Mr. Barton's review and report, which I thought was fairly comprehensive in assessing the FSI and other matters relative to the surrounding neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that's characterized by quite an eclectic mix. It's got huge towering apartment buildings on, adjacent to High Park. It's adjacent to Keel Street, which is a, has a subway station and a school in behind and a retail strip. So it's a very eclectic neighborhood and should be able to accommodate, as a result, eclectic designs. I'm not as fussed about the depth of the house. I am concerned about the height and the depth combined. I think if it was a two-story addition out the back, I don't think I'd have any difficulty, frankly, with it at all, or some way that mitigates the massing to the rear. I, I, you know, the neighbors are concerned about light and shade and shadow, and that is a legitimate concern. I think there are ways that, that those concerns could be reasonably mitigated and still accommodate the applicant's interest in expanding their home. I, I, I don't, I think it is a handsome design. I don't disagree with Carl on that, particularly from the street. But I do think that the three-story nature extension to the rear represents an unacceptable impact on the immediate neighbors. So for those reasons, I, I, I won't be supporting it. But I do think that there is, there is a path forward for the applicant to try to achieve what they can or what they'd like and still satisfy the neighbors. And to Carl's point, I think that can be done by doing appropriate consultation and discussions with the neighbors. So I won't be supporting it either. And I, the other thing that I, I'll just mention that with the new Bill 23 requirements, you know, if this were approved, there's no rights of appeal for the surrounding neighbors. And I think, given the, the extent of concern by the surrounding neighborhood, I think that would be an unfair imposition on them.
Okay. Mr. Chang, did you have anything to add before we vote on?
I think, yeah, both, both of my colleagues speak my mind, and it's really hard to find a three-stories addition at the back along this street, even though it's back into Keel. It's, the shape and the massing is really huge and I know, so I think, hopefully, they can come up with a better solution when they were at the next step. Sure, there will be someone appealing, so I think that would be a better way for them to have a meeting and mitigate a better form at the back of the building.
Okay, and, and I would agree with everything that's been said, and I would also like to commend all the, the neighbors and Mr. Barton for not just expressing their concerns, but actually outlining, you know, very explicitly why they feel that this application is problematic. And so with that, I'll need a motion.
I'll move, I'll move refusal of this application.
Okay, and Mr. the Chair, it's as amended, right? So, so it's as amended, deletion of variance 1, 4, 5, and 7, and also the purpose was revised.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Clay moves refusal, and that's seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? Okay, that carries, the application's been refused. Item number 20, 90 Elsina Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, three photographs of trees on the property, two presentation materials from the agent, as well as an urban forestry permit. We have, forestry's asking for condition number two, and five form letters in support from number 88 and 92, so both adjacent neighbors, as well as 105 and 106 Elsina Avenue and 20 Witchwood Avenue. Okay, there are no opposition speakers. Do I have the agent on the line?
With Dart Studio at 35 Golden Avenue, Suite 118 in Toronto?
Okay, panel members who have three variances before us, I don't think we need a presentation. Any questions for the agent? Okay, Ms. Yavari, there don't appear to be any questions. We've read all the material. Anything you want to add that's not in what we have before us?
No, I believe you have everything.
Okay, and you're aware of the forestry condition, correct?
Yes, we did already apply for the permit and receive approval to remove the tree from urban forestry, and you do have that permit approval.
Okay, all right, let's take it into committee for a decision.
Sorry, sorry, Chair, I'm sorry. I apologize for not catching up as quickly as I should, but the, I just want to explore, I know you've spoken to it, but I just want to explore the landscaping variance a little bit further, if we could. So you just speak to the rear yard and what's really going on back there. It looks like you've got a lot of permeable materials back there, so is that kind of catching up to the 50% more or less?
Yeah, so what's happened is their rear yard is in the north end, and the existing tree that is being removed was casting a lot of shadow. So they ended up putting existing turf. Right now, we haven't changed that. They do have soft landscaping flanking both the east and west, and an unpaved parking area in the back, it's just gravel. So we are extending on the west side a bit of the soft landscape for the new planting of the tree replacement, but for now, they are going to keep the existing stone patio and the existing turf.
Excuse me, I, sorry, Larry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Are you finished?
Yeah, please, please go ahead.
I don't, but isn't the existing, isn't the turf soft landscaping?
I don't think it's considered soft landscaping yet.
I, I think it is.
Oh, is it artificial?
It's, it's, yeah, it's artificial. The examiner said it was not.
So I have the same concern that my colleague does. I'd like to see a greater percentage of soft landscaping in the rear yard, and I was looking at this, my question, and I'm having the same problem as Larry, I'm not as fast as the chair, so I'm behind in the drawings, that I was assuming existing turf was grass, and my question was going to be, are you sure that the variance is correct? Because it seems to me that you've got a lot more landscaping than the variance suggests. I guess my comment would be, could you not remove some of that fake grass and put real grass down, in which case you probably don't even need the variance?
I would say, well, if it's a condition for approval, then yes. I think the struggle was that they could not grow proper grass back there on the north end with the existing tree, it was very large, so there's not a lot of sunlight. But I think they can add more, yes. They can add soft landscaping, they can extend the soft landscaping, I believe, on that west where the new tree is going to be planted.
So could you do enough soft landscaping that would eliminate the variance?
That would, I think, entail them replacing that turf completely.
Okay.
So if that's a condition for approval, then yes, because I know they do really want this mudroom off the back.
So the tree is being removed, is that correct?
Yes, the tree's injured, and it's going to be removed.
So then you wouldn't have problem growing grass?
And so, well, probably not, no. They are still in the north end in the backyard, but they would get more sunlight, yes.
So I guess the question, both Larry and I are going for the same question. If you remove the existing turf and put down real grass, could you remove the variance relative to landscaping?
Let me see, could you give me one quick second to calculate that? So that gives us an additional 46 square meters of soft landscape, yeah, so yes.
So not meaning to sound rude by this, but I would prepare, I would be prepared to move a motion that the application's approved, but not with variance number three. And I just wanted to clarify that we all know about what we're talking about. So that would mean it's approved, but you have to bring in some real grass to replace the artificial turf.
Yeah, understood.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Anything else you would like to add before we go into committee?
Nope, that's all, thank you.
Okay, let's take it into committee then. Carl, you want to take this one then?
Yeah, sure, Madam Chairman. I would like to move approval of the application with the exception of variance, or approval of variances 1 and 2, sorry, maybe it's an easier way of doing this, and denial of variance number three. I think with that, there clearly is not a problem. I think it's desirable, and frankly, I think the applicant might have come to the same conclusion, there was maybe a bit of a misunderstanding. I think that with that change, this is quite acceptable as an application and shouldn't have any negative impacts on the community.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Clay, you're seconding, so motion two, approve variances 1 and 2, and refuse variance number 3, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, so that concludes the morning session. I'm just looking at the clock here, so let's take 45 minutes, so let's be back at 2:35. Yeah, does that work for everybody? Okay, see you later, enjoy your lunch.